Good evening, everyone. I'm going to convene this regular meeting of the City Council. Would City Councilors please take their seats? City Councilors, please take your seats. I'm going to convene this regular meeting of the City Council tonight at 7:12. And would you all please join with me in standing reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is the agenda. Counselor Nodelle.
President Wright, I move to amend our agenda as follows. First to, and to adopt it. First to note written materials for the consent agenda item 3.17, resolution on reclassification of the Chief of Staff, mayoral communications and project coordinator and administrative coordinator positions in the mayor's office from the Board of Finance. Add 3.18 to the consent agenda item 3.18, which is the communication from Michael Trombley regarding the 75 Maple Street proposed rezoning with the action to waive it, accept it, and place it on file. Add to the consent agenda item 3.19, the resolution on finalization and availability of annual city audit for FY '18 from the Board of Finance with the action to waive it and adopt it, per the CAO. Remove from the agenda item 4.01, which was a presentation from Gillian Newton from SITO and Kevin Hively, the principal at Ningrent Partners regarding the Neighborhood Project Final Report, November 2018. Note the sponsor title change and written materials for agenda item 4.06, the resolution for the March 5, 2019 Annual City Meeting, amendments to charter changes to strengthen and restructure downtown improvement district, from Council Roof. Note the written communications regarding agenda item 4.08, which is the resolution for the March 5, 2019 Annual City Meeting Advisory Ballot Question Regarding City Hall Park, per Cindy White and Chief of Staff, Riddell. Amend agenda item 4.09 to remove ZA 1808 Form District 5 Boundaries from the public hearing regarding proposed amendments to Burlington Comprehensive Development Ordinance, per Comprehensive Planner Tuttle. Remove from the agenda item 4.11, the ordinance CDO Form District 5 Boundary ZA Number 1808, per the Comprehensive Planner. Amend the motion for agenda item 4.13, ordinance Comprehensive Development Ordinance Density Calculations, ZA Number 19-05, Planning Department Planning Commission Ordinance Committee. Two, quote, "To suspend the rules, waive all requirements for first and second readings and referral to the ordinance committee, and adopt ZA 19-05," per Assistant City Attorney Sturtevant. Add to the agenda item 4.14, resolution, March 5, 2019 Annual City Meeting, increase in maximum tax rate for general city purposes authorized, Board of Finance. Note revised version of this agenda item, specifically the resolution itself and written materials, per CAO Anderson.
Thank you, Counselor Nodelle. Seconded by Counselor Busher. Any discussion on the agenda? Counselor Mason.
Thank you, President Wright. I would like to make an additional amendment that was, didn't make to the long list of amendments, and that would be to amend agenda 4.09 to remove ZA 1902 from the public hearing and also amend, gotta catch up here, remove, excuse me, from the agenda item 4.12, which deals again with ZA 1902. Expectations will take that up at a subsequent meeting.
Counselor Mason, 4.09 is not removed, but the public hearing is removed?
It's just removed from the public hearing, consideration of ZA 1902.
So there's no public hearing on that?
On that matter. And then also remove 4.12 from tonight's agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Mason. Any further amendments or discussion on the agenda amendments? Here, we have a second from Counselor Busher. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have our agenda. Item number two is public forum. That is normally for a time certain of 7:30, but it's pretty clear with the number of people that have signed up that we will go way past 7:30. So we're going to start it early tonight, and it will be, because of the number of people speaking, it will be two minutes rather than three minutes, rather than the normal three minutes. And just to start out with, we know that there is an issue that many people are going to be speaking on tonight, that there's a lot of passion around, and we will listen attentively up here to your comments and remarks. And all that we ask is that the comments that you make certainly show all of the passion that you want, but we do ask that the comments be made respectfully. Please don't call out City Councilors or the mayor. If you want to make comments, they should go through the council president and not be personalized to different councilors or the mayor. But otherwise, tell us whatever you want to tell us. So we will kick this off, and not that everybody is speaking in public forum, is speaking about the parks issue, but I'm sure most are. So we'll kick this off with Erica Reddick.
Thank you, Council. I am actually just here tonight to say hello and introduce myself.
Everybody make sure you pull the microphone in. I'll handle that.
Is this better?
Yes.
How about this? Really, really close?
There you go. That's good.
My name is Erica Bundy Reddick, and I'm here tonight to introduce myself as a new candidate for the North District seat of City Council. So I just wanted to say hello and thank you for your service, and I look forward to getting to know all of you moving forward, and all of you who are especially in my district. I'd like to hear what you have to say and what you're concerned about, so I can make sure that the new North End is represented well on the Council. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reddick. Xander Wheeler is up next. Sandy Wheeler, to be followed by Janet Patterson.
Any topic.
This is any topic that you want to speak on. This is, we have public hearings later on charter changes. This is-
Charter change, which is the DID.
We have a public hearing on DID, but you can speak on it now if you choose to.
That's fine. I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the hard work and effort people have done to think carefully about the future of Burlington. And in particular, I'm speaking in favor of amending the downtown improvement district for the following simple reasons. The success of the Churchweek Marketplace is noted, and it's gone for decades. And the customers and people I know in Burlington, residents and otherwise, all know and appreciate that Burlington is much more diverse and rich than a four-block shopping district. And what excites me about the expansion of the DID is that valuable resources will be, continue to be applied to the marketplace, but will be extended to the many dozens of important blocks that provide the character and the special nature of Burlington. And I think it's time to do that, and that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Appreciate that. Janet Patterson is up next, to be followed by Shereen Hart. Good evening, Ms. Patterson. Welcome.
I'm a longtime resident of Burlington. I think I know most of you on the Council. And I'm a taxpayer. I just want to say that I've been, appreciated all the work that's been done in City Hall Park, but I don't agree with some of it. So what I'm suggesting that we do is we have this vote and make it possible for everybody to vote in Burlington and make a decision as to whether we want what's planned or we want a new plan. I've walked through the park. I've been part of gathering and making sure that people throw away the right things as part of recycling and composting and so on. So I've been part of the park for a long time. I really feel that we need to have it very local. We don't need food. We need bathrooms and walks and benches. So I would vote for benches and bathrooms. And just to make sure that we have the right to vote, bringing that as a ballot issue is very important to me, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. And the one thing I did not announce is there's a time system in front of you, of course. When the middle light goes off, your time is starting to wind down. You probably have between a half minute and a minute. And when the red light goes off, you need to conclude your remarks. And it's important tonight that everybody follows by the two minutes. So Shereen Hart is up next, to be followed by Wayne Senville. Good evening, Ms. Hart. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here personally and on behalf of the Burlington Business Association, and forgive me for reading. As part of our work advocating for Burlington's economic vitality, we know how important it is that Burlington ensures that its residents and visitors have access to safe, inviting public spaces. The plan for the revitalization of City Hall Park shows that our community is making the effort to provide just this type of space in our downtown. After extensive public input and several design changes to better meet the desires of community members, the current plan provides City Hall Park with a real future as a community asset, featuring healthy trees, grass, spaces for services and park visitors, an open area for community members to meet, and environmental features that will support our community's values on environmental sustainability. This plan was voted on to move forward by Council 11 to 1 nearly eight years, eight months ago. It feels like eight years. It is time, it is time to move this forward. On behalf of the 200-plus members of the Burlington Business Association, we support this existing plan for the park. It will serve to improve vibrancy, supporting our local businesses, and bringing more people to our downtown. The current plan will create a public space that residents, visitors, and downtown workers can enjoy. It is vital that Burlington supports efforts to revitalize the park in the same way we have for the northern waterfront and bike path. The time is now to bring this positive change to downtown Burlington. As such, on behalf of the BBA Board and all its member businesses, we urge the Council to move forward with the current plan to revitalize City Hall Park in the most expeditious manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Wayne Senville is up next, to be followed by Charlie Messing. Good evening, Mr. Senville, and welcome.
Good evening, and I hope you'll also excuse me for reading, since I write better than I speak. Over 3,300 Burlington voters, 3,300, have signed their names to the advisory question on City Hall Park that you're considering tonight. That's a truly huge number of people to sign a petition. It's with disappointment that I've heard that the mayor and some of you may refuse to place the advisory question on the ballot as it is worded and signed off on by so many voters. I really hope that you'll reconsider. I know the projects has taken much time, and much money has been spent on the plan so far, but I'd ask you to recall the waterfront transit center project. Over $2 million and several years had been spent on that before there was a public outcry and the mayor, Mayor Clavel, and the City Council reconsidered that plan. The end result, though delayed, was a much better project. As with that project, what's at stake with the $4 million City Hall plan will be with us for decades. We need to get it right and to have a plan that the majority of the community stands behind. That's what we'll learn from the advisory question in just five weeks, if you put it on the ballot. As a retired city planner and a past member and past chair of the Burlington Planning Commission, I know not to expect a perfect process or a perfect plan. But at last year's DRB hearing, nearly 200 people spoke out against it, and now 3,300 residents are asking to weigh in through the advisory question process. The petition before you is like the flashing red lights and warning bells at a railroad crossing when a train's approaching. It's asking you to stop and to listen.
Thank you, Mr. Senville. Charlie Messing, to be followed by Kathleen Ryan. Good evening, Mr. Messing, and we're glad you're feeling better tonight.
One, two. One, two. Okay. I guess I just want to be audible. Hello, Mayor Weinberger, councilors, and everyone else. It's great, a lot of people here. Okay. I've been to every park planning meeting and public input session since 2014. At the public input sessions, or charrettes, the design team handed out questionnaires about what changes were most important. We split into groups. We got about 10 minutes to discuss ideas. We were rushed and humored. They classified our ideas to fit the questionnaires. They collected our ideas on big pads, then passed out little round colored stickers. We got 10 each for each set of six options represented by drawn boxes. We applied the stickers to the boxes which represented more trees, or accessibility, or more activities, peace and quiet, et cetera. We gave them our input, and each time the revision was presented through nearly eligible charts and PowerPoint presentations, we noticed the plan had changed very little. I have here the original plan from three years ago and the latest design from last summer after the ad hoc committee. You may see similarities. A lot of similarities. 18 seconds. There are a lot of people here who feel strongly on both sides of this issue. A lot of people, and they feel strongly. To have the people vote or not. No more voting. Let's go on. I think this is absolute proof why we need to let the people vote in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messing. Kathleen Ryan is up next, to be followed by Mark Porter. Good evening, Ms. Ryan. Welcome.
You know my name. I'm a landscape architect. I've been retired. Oh, hello. Sorry. Can I get another minute? My name is Kathleen Ryan. I practiced landscape architecture in Burlington from 1972 until retired.
Turn the microphone towards you.
I served on both the Design Advisory Board and the Planning Commission for several years. I want to talk about what seems to have been treated as an inconvenient truth. City Hall Park is the center of the, and the defining feature and the namesake of a national register historic district. The city has awarded, that designation was awarded in '83. It encompasses the park and 23 surrounding buildings. The essence of the park's historic design is the formal aerial walkways leading to the strong central focal point of the decorative fountain, which is visible from three entries. This layout has been essentially the same since, for 150 years. Despite the current state of disrepair, the park is highly valued by Burlington residents. This has been clearly shown by the public outcry in what we see tonight. The park provides growing, the growing number of downtown residents in Burlington live in apartments and high-rise buildings, a green calm refuge for the city's bustle and urban landscape. It is their backyard. To visitors and tourists from U.S., Canada, and abroad, City Hall Park is iconic town green, a symbol of the historic Vermont that they have come to experience. The new plan is in no way evokes the history of Burlington or the historic park design. Despite the uninformed or disingenuous language in the narratives developed by the city departments stating that the new plan has passed muster of historic review, that no one will be able to walk through this park, one paragraph, what will-
You need to finish with their last sentence. We have to keep them-
What they will walk into is a huge paved plaza and a splash pad, a park design that is being rubber stamped throughout the country, in cities all over the nation. It will not be recognizable as a historic City Hall Park. It will not serve as the true needs of Burlington.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. We appreciate that. Mark Porter is up next, to be followed by Deborah Roseman. Good evening, Mr. Porter. Welcome.
How are you? My name is Mark Porter from Ward 1. I want to very briefly talk about the-
Everybody, everybody make sure you pull the microphone in close, so everybody can hear you.
Hear?
Gotcha.
Hear. Very briefly, talk about the current presence in the park. You know, I see the writings. I see it in the front porch forums and stuff. This is not the jewel of Burlington right now. It could be, but it's not. Saturday, on a Saturday morning and Sunday afternoon, when the sun's shining in the summer, is not what the park is like the rest of the time. Right? This can be a very intimidating place to walk down. It can be a very, you take a look at, you don't want to walk into the middle around the fountain because of all the crowds. You can't tell these people not to go there, but you don't have a sense of space. And you don't have a sense of space because the walkways are so thin. If you want to look very briefly at some of the areas, such as in Europe, a lot of people have been quoting, "What's it like in Europe?" Hey, I've been to Europe. Many of you have been to Europe. Guess what? They either put a wall around it, or they have big walkways. And why is that? Because you can feel safe walking through there and not feel intimidated. So the damage that's out in the park is not from anything else but feet, because there's no place else to go. You can't walk to a breast in opposite directions and not step off the curb. The last piece I want to talk about is a representative of democracy. I voted for two people on this board, and you told us not to mention names, but them. And I trust that they're going to do their best to represent my ward, who I, we certainly have differences, but I elected them and I chosen them, and that's my vote. I didn't ask for anybody else to come up and say, "Hey, Mark, that doesn't count." So all I ask you to do is stay with the current plan, support the current plan. If Sharon votes against it, or if Richard votes against it, then I have to live with that, because I've already voted that way. It's my choice to change it in the future if I want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. And of course, anytime there's talk about a wall, the question is, who pays for the Deborah Roseman, to be followed by Sandy Nguyen.
Hi, I'm Deborah Roseman. I live on South Union Street.
And again, if, I'm sorry, I caused that little, so start over. We'll start your time over, and make sure you pull the microphone in close, so we can all hear you.
Deborah Roseman, I live on South Union Street. I am completely and totally in support of getting our park done after all of this time. I feel that voices have been heard, revisions have been done. The outcomes haven't been liked by a lot of people, and that's really what democracy is, is you have that chance, you have that choice, and sometimes it doesn't work out your way. I just want to say that I just completely support what's being done, and I would really like to have a park that's safe, that's beautiful, and that everyone can enjoy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roseman. And Sandy Nguyen is up next.
When I get across Carson.
To be followed by Ben Daniel. And Ms. Nguyen comes bearing treats.
Good evening. My name's Sandy Nguyen, and I am representing everything and anything involving fair trade. Burlington is a fair trade town, has been for 10 years. Champlain Colleges, St. Michael's College, UVM trying to, and my job tonight is to sweeten up all those people up here, so they'll be very amenable to your thoughts. They are getting fair trade Lake Champlain chocolates as we speak. I've done my job. Fair trade is very important. Chocolate is one of the biggest industries with child slave labor. There's about 40 million slaves in the world today. About 2 million children work in the cocoa industry. If you buy chocolate that is not fair trade, you are buying products made by child labor and child slave labor. We have a lot of other industries that have it. If you wear clothes, you're wearing child slave labor. If you have electronics, if you have sugar, and if you have chocolate. Tonight, I'll just talk about chocolate. Please, please, as our new holiday coming up, Valentine's Day, if you're going to buy chocolate and you don't need chocolate, you really don't, please make it fair trade chocolate, and let's support making the world fairer for everybody, especially the children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. I believe I got the last name wrong. It's Dan Daniel. You're passing? Okay. It's Carolyn Bates up next, then. Is Carolyn here? She's on her way. To be followed by Elizabeth Curtis. Good evening, Ms. Bates.
Good evening, Kurt Wright. Thank you very much. I had stuff packed in a, anyway. I want to thank everyone I have gone to over the past three years about City Hall Park, as well as all of the citizens who've participated in this for their time. It's been a totally incredible amount of time. I am Carolyn Bates. I'm a photographer. I've been a Burlington resident since 1973, owned a home since '78, and I'm part of Ward 5. I want to say that people are people, and sometimes we change our minds. After long conversations yesterday with a friend of mine who had a sister who is a quadriplegic, and another friend who has a disabled child, both are being from our community, I have come to realize that my feelings on the park have changed. I am proud of our efforts on saving more trees, but I know with a better understanding of the widening of walkways and an intersection with the fountain for children with disabilities and families, that I have a new respect for the space that they need to navigate, and it's more, and it's more than most people thought in size. As I relook at the plan for City Hall Park, I can see that we are all getting something out of this as a community. I hope people who are not in favor of this design will rethink this and have the courage to say so. For the children in wheelchairs who need a cool place to play and water to splash around in, let us all build this park sooner rather than later. To me, these kids are more important than anything else, even the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Elizabeth Curtis is up next, to be followed by Travis Reyer. Good evening, and welcome.
Thank you. Hello. I live in Ward 3 on Bloody Street, and I don't have a particular opinion on the park, but I do have a particular opinion about how we decide these things. In America, mostly, we like to quantify problems. We like to get a number. I had a historic tree removed, and it was only done after I could prove to the city that the historic tree had raised my driveway and sidewalk by 18 inches and eaten 19 measurable inches out of my driveway, and SSST couldn't get in. We met all those standards. So I'm open to other people's numbers as well. But I also question, how do you quantify the ineffable? The lunches, the books read, the quiet sitting? And we have a way for that. We ask each and every person who has had that experience to think about it and look at their ballot and assign a number. It can be one for yes, it can be two for no, it can, or vice versa. And there will be a winner and there will be a loser, but everyone will know that they have won or lost in an open, fair, and quantified competition.
Thank you. And Travis Reyer is up next, to be followed by- And Travis Ryer is up next, to be followed by John Bussange. Good evening, welcome.
Hi. It's Friar, but that's okay, I probably scribbled it. So I'm not here to debate the merits of the new plan. I don't think that's what we're supposed to be debating here at this point. It's whether citizens should have a say. It's a question of the democratic process, as far as I understand what we're debating. So regardless, I think of-- regardless of what anyone thinks about the new plan, I think everyone should be for putting the question on the ballot, because it's just better democratic process to get everyone's opinion. Yeah, so I'm here to ask that the city council put the question on the ballot.
Thank you. And John Bussange is up next. Good evening, Mr. Bussange. Welcome, to be followed by Lynn Martin.
Good evening. I'm John Bussange, Vice Chair of the Parks Recreation and Waterfront Commission. The commission has unanimously supported the existing City Hall Park plan that you voted to approve several months ago by an 11 to 1 margin. We are most appreciative of the thoughtfulness that you have given to this important city project. As you know, this initiative has been going on for four or five years. The past two years or so, there have been multiple forums and public hearings. At each one, the department has listened and made changes and adjustments to the initial design. You've supported that lengthy process, as has our commission, because we both understand how important public input is to a project like this one, and we both understand the importance of preserving the often time-consuming process in democracy of making a decision. We listen, as you have, and when the time comes for vote, you, our elected officials and representatives, will make a well-informed decision, because you've given residents an opportunity to weigh in, and you've been given the critical information from the design team. The commission is most grateful that you have been patient and trusted that process. Even after you voted 11 to 1 to approve a plan, you left the door open for additional feedback, and that information came back to the department, and still, more changes were made to the plan. Equally important, you have understood that our City Hall Park is foremost a civic square, which has served Burlingtonians for over 150 years. It is a place for community and people to gather, relax, and host a variety of activities. It is an active, functioning urban space. Thank you for your patience and wisdom in letting this process play itself out. We've got a great design. You've done your job well.
Thank you, Mr. Bussange. Lynn Martin, to be followed by Richard Hilliard. Good evening, Ms. Martin. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening.
There you go.
You've all seen me here before and have heard my position, which is now reflected in the good work of Donna and Monique. I'm here to beg you to listen to the thousands of residents who signed the petition, put the ballot question they support as currently written on the March ballot. It was approved in advance by Arlene Blackburn, submitted to her to forestall the type of hijinks now being floated by some council members. We pride ourselves for living in a democracy, but over the past few years, input from the residents of this city have been shelled far too often, if not pushed into the empty hole that now graces the center of our downtown. We don't want our government to be another version of Trumpite. Democracy is fragile, and I am begging you again, please stand with the people. They will thank you at the polls, and I thank you now for letting me speak. Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Richard Hilliard, to be followed by Vincent Pierce. Good evening, Mr. Hilliard. Welcome.
Good evening, President Wright. Thank you. Informed by Councilor Nodel's posting on Front Porch Forum that I only just picked up, she is telling us that the city budget is going to be short, or is short before a few tasks of 1.8 million, and it appears that the latest proposal that may or may not be before you tonight will get down to about 500,000, which will be added to the tax bill. So I've got some ideas that I'd offer for consideration. Postpone the City Hall Park redesign until there is an informed and publicly acceptable design. I'm guessing that that could save $1 million in spend for 2019, 2020. I'm not saying that the design is good or the design is bad, but 3,300 people are not all to be dismissed. This gives the opportunity for some other additional spend. And given that the Burlington Police Department is loath to implement traffic enforcement during gap years between traffic safety issues being identified in the city and traffic enforcement being implemented, I'd prioritize $100,000 in speed radar signs or similar devices that we could put in sensitive, safety-identified areas around the city. I'd add $250,000 for recruiting, the net gain of 750 new jobs in the redevelopment of Burlington Town Center, over and above the 1,000-plus that have left. $100,000 to monitor the relationship with Brookfield so that we don't have to be embarrassed by the softball exhibition last Tuesday. And finally, oh, seven seconds. Finally, surely the city has a responsibility to advise the net financial loss to the tax base with the incessant delays, obfuscation, and, to use a little Cockney rhyming slang, a series of porkies on the town center redevelopment.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Vincent Pierce is up next, to be followed by Amy Radcliffe. Good evening, Mr. Pierce. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. My name is Vincent Pierce. I'm a resident of Ward 2, and along with John Bussange and a few other folks, a current member of the Parks Recreation and Waterfront Commission, where I've had the pleasure to serve for the last three years. I'm not here to speak on behalf of my colleagues, although, as John mentioned, we have all expressed our unanimous support for the plan in its current iteration. Like many other speakers here tonight, I appreciate your hard work and your commitment to this project, and I appreciate the passion of everyone on both sides, because in the end, we want the same thing, which is a beautiful, functional, and welcoming park that works for all Burlingtonians and anyone who's visiting. But like many other people, I encourage you to move ahead with this project. We've delayed, and delayed, and delayed. I don't think anyone can argue that the park doesn't need updates. As someone mentioned earlier, the sidewalks are too narrow, there's patches of dirt everywhere. Rather than keeping the park green, we need to make it green, because in the summer, though it is beautiful, trees are dying, grass is dying, and I look forward to moving forward with this project as planned, and seeing new growth, new flowers, new shrubs, as we've planned. I've been trying to keep up with all of the different things that people have been saying about the park, and as I mentioned, I really appreciate the passion of everyone. But one thing I will say is that I've been a little disappointed by some of the rhetoric that some folks have chosen to use in this park, especially that which kind of accuses the current state of City Hall Park as being a response from deliberate mismanagement by the city. And I, having worked with many of those city employees, think that that's a disservice to our city employees.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Amy Radcliffe is up next, to be followed by Maxine Holmes. Good evening, Ms. Radcliffe. Welcome.
Thank you. When 3,300 people speak out by signing a petition saying they are not happy with a city plan, and they want it on the ballot, it says that the plan does not reflect the people's wishes as well as it could have. My own understanding of the problems of the park had to do mostly with compacted soil, a broken fountain, need for benches and bathrooms, and maybe something for kids to play on. What we've gotten instead is extended commercial space for Church Street Enterprises, 40% fewer mature trees, 30% more pavement, and a food kiosk surrounded by dozens of cafes and restaurants. I believe that the reason that people do these petitions is because they're not happy, and the plan, however the process went, it didn't do a good enough job of reflecting the wishes of the people. So that's why it needs to be on the ballot, because now we have our chance to vote on it, and I think it's an important thing for people to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radcliffe. Maxine Holmes is up next, to be followed by Charles Thorpe. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. I first want to thank you all for doing the job you do. I know it must be really hard, day after day, year after year, to work in this situation, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you do. Thank you. My name is Maxine Holmes. I've been living in Burlington for 45 years, and all of that time was spent in one house, five blocks from here. The park is my park, in terms of my neighborhood park, one of them, and a very important one. I came to the whole process of the park planning very late, because I was making an assumption that things were going along fine, and you know, planning was being done very well, and until I heard someone say, "They're cutting down all these trees." And I said, "What?" And they said, "Yes, especially the mature, tall trees that give us the big shade." And I said, "Really?" And I couldn't believe it. And I then sent a message to Front Porch Forum. People got in touch with me to let me know what was going on, and I said, "Oh, dear." I volunteered to collect signatures, to talk to people outside the polling places. I collected about 100 signatures for the petition to put the referendum on the ballot, and I had a wonderful opportunity to talk to 100 people of the 3,300 that want this referendum put on the ballot. And one of the things that they told me, which made me feel good about what I was doing, was the fact that they were upset about the trees being cut, big, mature trees. 22 saplings, or 18 new saplings, is not going to make up for the big shade that we get from those mature trees. So if at all possible, please, 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 save those big trees if you can, because we need that. I love going to events in the park, but I have to be under a tree, because I can't be in the sun. It's too hot, and I get skin cancer. Anyway, please, the other thing is safety, 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 please.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Charles Thorpe is up next, to be followed by Andrew Simon. Good evening, Mr. Thorpe.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak.
And welcome.
I'm Charles Thorpe from Ward 2.
You need to pull the microphone a little bit closer. Speak right into it.
Hear me?
Thank you.
I'm Charles Thorpe. I live at 151 Hyde Street in Ward 2. It's the street I grew up on. I'm here to support having the issue put on the ballot. We're proposing to spend $4 million at a time where the nation is going into recession. Our budget is low. Even if you don't support cutting the trees, even if you support cutting the trees, that we need to think about whether we want to spend $4 million at a time when we don't have that money. I would also like to speak against expanding or privatizing downtown. It is part of our patrimony, our heritage. It is part of our commons. Anything that would privatize downtown or lead to gentrification is not a good policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Andrew Simon is up next, to be followed by Andrea Todd. Good evening, Mr. Stein. Welcome. Simon, excuse me, welcome.
I think that you handle a lot of complex issues. I know that to be true. I don't believe that the issue of putting the City Hall Park ballot item on the question is a complex issue. I think that we set up the mechanism to put ballot items for a good reason. We want people to participate in that process. It's a part of the democratic process, and I don't think that all of the discussion of the merits of the City Hall Park design or the City Hall Park ballot item are germane to your decision. 3,300 people have signed that petition to put it on the ballot. I don't believe either that the South Burlington Court decision about the Rebel nickname is germane to your decision. I think it gives you the power, perhaps, to keep it off the ballot, but I would think that a decision to keep it off the ballot, this ballot item promoted by the signatures of 3,300 people, would be a shame, an affront to democracy, and a mistake on your part. So I urge you to put this item on the ballot, let the voters decide, and then we'll move from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Andrea Todd is up next, to be followed by Millicent-- Dr. Millicent Edison. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi. It's desk and chair wheels up here. It's chicky. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to talk about the downtown expansion. I had the opportunity to listen to a presentation this fall, and frankly, I'm surprised it's come so quickly to the-- to a charter change, or to the change from a city commission to a public-- to a private commission, and I really don't support that. My question broadly is, what's broken that needs to be fixed? It seems like the existing commission does a good job servicing the downtown area. Why not expand it into a broader reach and a bigger entity to take care of the city, if that's something that the city wants? I don't think giving up that amount of, I guess, responsibility should be given to the private-- to private people. I think it belongs in the hands of the city and should be overseen by the members of the council, or the commission, sorry. Currently, I actually don't love walking down Church Street the way I used to. I feel like it's much more geared towards tourists and much more-- there's not as much walking space in the summertime. These are just sort of quality of life issues for me that is personal, but I also see the value in the increased amenities and the added plowing, the added salting. Those things are all really great things, that I think our city is doing a good job at, and if it's something that we need to expand, then we should be expanding the resources to the city's Public Works Department to be able to do a better job, if that's what the city wants. So for that reason, I really don't-- I also really feel like not a lot of people know what this expansion is. So I would request that before any public change happens, that it's a-- there's a broader education campaign for the city.
Thank you. Millicent-- Millicent Edison, to be followed by Albert Pacharka. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. I'm Millicent Idson. I'm retired as a state public health veterinarian and epidemiologist with the New York State Department of Health and the University at Albany School of Public Health. As such, I have public health concerns about the spray water feature part of the park. And because of those public health concerns, I am recommending that the public have a chance to vote on whether they want redesign of the park, and if there is redesign of the park, I would recommend that the spray water feature be in a separate area of the city as a dedicated water feature. I agree with one of the previous speakers that having a recreational water feature could be really wonderful for everyone, particularly children, but it would be safer to have it in a separate area. New York State had a huge outbreak, disease outbreak, with thousands of people becoming ill from a spray park. Now, that was a larger spray park than what's being proposed here for City Park, but there are a lot of safety concerns around animal and human waste getting in and then being sprayed up and aerosolized into people's faces, and so there are ways to control that, and in fact, New York has laws to reduce those risks so that water parks are safe, and those include fencing to keep animals, dogs, wildlife out of the park to reduce the waste that will be in that area, having foot baths, bathhouses, restrooms, having a lock, and having someone man the park. So I think it's a wonderful feature, and it can be done more safely if it's not right in the middle of City Park, where it's not fenced and animals and people can be walking through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Pacharka. Albert Pacharka, to be followed by Charles Simpson. Good evening, Mr. Pacharka.
Good evening. Of course, saving the park should be on the ballot, but the deeper issue here is not just the contours of the park, or the number of trees to be called, or the amount of new concrete poured over the green space. What's also at issue here is the limitations of representative democracy in a time of-- is the limitations of representative democracy in a time of rapacious capitalism that we now call neoliberalism. Like the Yellow Vest movement now underway in France, we in Burlington see that our current system, under Democratic, Republican, and Progressive Party tutelage, is stacked and rigged. We saw it with the F-35, when the city's political class sided with Lockheed Martin over the people who will be suffering from the jet's impact. We saw it with the Marketplace mural, when eight white counselors put the financial investment of Church Street businesses over resisting racism. Our focus should be on building power in our communities. We need to move from representative democracy to popular democracy, from the voting booth, to direct action, to save City Hall Park. All power to the people, not the Pomelos.
Thank you, Mr. Pacharka. Charles Simpson is up next. Excuse me, hold that, please, please. Barb Alsop is up after Mr. Simpson. Good evening, Mr. Simpson. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Charles Simpson lived for 20 years in Ward 6. I'd like to, I like to think that irony is part of our local culture, and indeed it is. Consider the life-size bronze children playing on Church Street, where there is no play space. Because after all, children are not consumers. Now, we're considering a park makeover, with no dedicated tot lot, no swings, no space to change a baby's nappies in privacy. The squirt fountain is part of that irony, without space to change into, and out-of-bathing suits, no towels, and useless for 10 months a year. This being the case, I propose that the playing children statue be relocated in City Hall Park, as a conceptual, if empty, gesture of our concern for children and childhood. You're taking that off of my time. My second comment is to the city attorney via the council. Were presented with an elaborate propaganda campaign, in support of a pending ballot item involving the expenditure of millions of taxpayers' funds, was developed by city employees and printed at city cost. We know that is illegal for the federal agencies to do that. The Department of Defense can't lobby the public to increase their appropriations or undertake new missions. How is the city's behavior legal?
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Barb, excuse me, would everybody please, please be respectful. Hold the applause, so we can keep moving along here. Barb Alsop is up next, to be followed by Bob Kiernan. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here to talk both about our business improvement district and the park, because I think they're both boondoggles. On the downtown improvement district, I would suggest that a little bit of research will show that in other cities that have put these in, it has resulted in gentrification, exclusion of undesirables, and generally, limited access to people who are appropriately well-heeled to be involved with those businesses. I don't think that's what Burlington's about. City Hall Park, it's my front yard. I live on St. Paul Street. I look out my windows at it. It looks fine to me. But that's just my opinion. Put in a splash pad, and absent massive climate change immediately, it will be usable for what, two months a year? Maybe three, if we have a hot spring or fall. This design was made for tourists and businesses. It wasn't made for the people. And I look at that park every day, and I see Burlington residents using it. I see Burlington residents in the summer come to sit under the shade trees, because their apartments are too hot. I see people who need benches right by the pavement, because they're disabled. And we're moving the trees that cover those benches? It makes no sense. Let the people be heard. What harm can there be? We vote the first week of March. You're not building the park before the first week of March, not in Vermont.
Thank you, Ms. Alsop. I asked, I asked, please, to hold the applause. Bob Kiernan, to be followed by Faith. And Faith, when you come up, you will have to pronounce your last name for me. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. During deliberations and planning for the needed renovation of City Hall Park, you all, the city council, and the city administration have equally represented all of us in the community. And you've listened to a great deal of various points of view over several years and recent months. You have arrived at a fair and comprehensive conclusion. The council has succeeded at exactly what our democratic form of city government calls for. The process should not be delayed, because a different point of view requests to be heard once again. Some of the recent name-calling, city staff have been accused of bogus thinking. Quote, "When the clubhouse gets too cozy." These have all been posted in the Front Porch Forum. Professionals said to have provided self-serving recommendations, and the city council is suggested to be suppressing voters. There is no need for a ballot measure in March, or any new plan. Please move ahead now with the City Hall Park renovations plans as scheduled. I live just steps from the park, have done so for 14 years now, and look forward to seeing the beginning of work this February. Thanks again, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Faith, come on down. And the last name is?
I, Inglesrud. Faith Inglesrud.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing me to speak today, even though I've only lived here for two years. And I spent the last 30 years living out in the boonies, watching trees grow, and seeing what happens when trees are cut, when you select the healthier trees to grow. And I can assure all the people who are concerned about losing shade, that those trees that are given feeder roots to grow in soil where they can spread out, and where they aren't compacted by constant use, will leap forward and fill the airspace with new branches and healthier life. And I also want to point out that the principle of having multiple layers of trees is really important for our long-term shade in our City Hall Park. And I'm sure many people already know that, but for those who don't, those of us who have direct experience with watching that happen, it's really hard to see people feeling so burdened by this idea of losing individual trees. So I ask that the city council do whatever you need to do to see the trees taken care of, and make a beautiful space for human habitat, as well as the habitat for the trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Monstree is up next, to be followed by Doreen Kraft. Good evening, Ms. Monstree. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Catherine Monstree. And I have sort of a unique view. As a business owner who's across from the park, I see it every day, all day long. And there's lots of, lots of activity, although certainly during the week, it's a little bit desolate. And I think that people sometimes walk around the park instead of through it. And from our view, we really look forward to seeing the new park plan go, move forward. And it's time, and I think I love trees as much as anyone, but I really think the new plan is exciting. And what I'm looking forward to is seeing more people use it. Right now, I feel like there's a select group that's there, and everyone deserves a place. And I don't want anyone to leave the park if they don't want to leave the park. But I want to add people. I want to see more elderly. I want to see kids playing. I want to see families coming through. And right now, it's just not that way. When it's not the farmer's market, it's a pretty quiet place. And I'm really looking forward to seeing it be more of a destination for our tourists, and for our locals, and a place that you want to go. So thank you all very much for hearing all of us. And I really appreciate everyone's different views, and being able to sit here and do that in a safe space. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monstree. Doreen Kraft, to be followed by David Shine. Good evening, Ms. Kraft. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. So I just wanted to tell you, on a side note, that a number of people have come to me in the last couple of weeks, and they've wanted to start a new group. And it's called Keep the Lake Clean, because they understood that this park was going to deal with stormwater in such a significant way, and contribute so much to the healthiness of the lake, that we should really begin an effort. And I said that City Arts is not in the business of creating advocacy groups, but I just thought it'd be interesting for you to know that. So I'm going to read to you tonight, a letter that was sent to me by Vicki Smith from King Street Center. She says, "I'm reaching out to put in my two cents as someone who regularly walks through the park to and from meetings, but discourages our staff from taking our children and youth to the park for obvious reasons of safety. I recognize BCA's critical role in building community, and a provision for a broad scope of services aimed at improving the quality of life for Burlington residents. Efforts to revamp City Hall Park are in keeping with our community's vision of amenities, which provide a safe place for children and families to be. So I am hoping this project can be going. I think the city council has voted more than once, and I recall a joyful room full of people when it was announced that the Pomelos were making a significant gift to jumpstart the project. Sadly, that was so many years ago. I understand there is a group that is upset about this plan. I do get that, and I wish those of us who are ready to go, get to go and reimagine this park now. Shall we lift up our passionate voices more fully, but honestly, we are so busy serving the very kids and the families who are too afraid to use this park." Vicki Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Perfect timing. David Shine is up next, to be followed by Milton Rosa Ortiz. Good evening, Mr. Shine. Welcome.
Hi, hi, everybody. Thanks for your public service. I'm going to be the bad guy in this room, worse than Albert, even. What really bothers me about this plan is that it was designed in a nepotistic, and one could say corrupt, way, because the designer is married to the second-in-command of Burlington City Arts. And that none of you caught that in all your meetings, and said, "No, we can't do that. This is corrupt, maybe illegal, this kind of nepotism, to award a design contract to the husband of an employee of a department that has a vested interest in the project." I hope you all look at it, and give us voters a chance to tell you all, pay attention. Number two, Pomelo Spurdy Fountain. It's not a good idea for the park. It'd be a great idea for Oakledge Park. It would address Carolyn's concerns about people in wheelchairs. It'd be right next to the Tree House. So let's move that Spurdy thing there that takes up all that concrete, and that's a health menace. Number three, let's get a playground there. I lived in Chicago. The playground in the park saved my butt when I had a two-year-old. And let's get some bathrooms, where you can bring some kids in to take a leak. This plan is not only born out of nepotism, it's a bad plan. It doesn't address the needs of us. And let us vote on that, please, because it's really a bad plan, and it was produced in a very non-transparent way. For all of the PAC, PR about how transparent it is, nobody caught the nepotism.
Thank you, Mr. Shine. Milton Rosa Ortiz is up next, followed by Peggy Lures. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, folks. My name is Milton. I live in the Old North End, and I'm a frequent user of the park. First, maybe it is because I come from a place where democracy is not as strong. But I've been following the design of this park for the last five years, and to me, it has been democratic. And we have been involved in it, and our voices have been heard. And the park design, as it stands right now, reflects that. It incorporates very many facets of our community, and there's a lot of needs. As far as the trees, I wanted to say that sometimes I worry that we are, that long-term wisdom is being trumped by short-term passions. I am okay with the cutting of trees, if 25, 50, 100 years from now, there's really tall, big, strong, robust canopy of trees, that our children, and our children's children, and their children can then take advantage of. I urge you to move forward with this plan. It's a good plan, and we have all had input into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Peggy Lures is up next, to be followed by Janice Rusati. Good evening, Ms. Lures. Welcome.
I wanted to speak to two things, democracy and trees. I think democracy calls for us having this on the ballot. We ought to be able to vote on it. I was not aware of most of the meetings about it. I actually live in Ward 3, which is the downtown. And what I have noticed is all that ever happens, happens because of the merchants, or now we'll have kiosk in the park, as if there weren't enough places to get coffee in this area. There are a lot of them. So very little is done for the people who live here. Most of what's been done here has cut away, the boathouse did away with a lovely little piece of land we used to have. The Eco Site on North Avenue is just horrendous to even have to look at. The hole in the middle of the city is going nowhere, and it's surrounded by advertising, though for some reason, nobody else can put up posters. But they've got them all over that hole, which is going nowhere. So I am not impressed with what's going on with the city's planning process. I mean, the process might, you know, the planning might be great, but the execution is pretty bad. You know, a big hole, all the trees gone on North Avenue, even the ones in front of the building there, which I guess they took down so they could put up a sign saying Elm Tree Plaza or something. But I just really think, you know, we are, we are due, we are in, and it is going to get worse, climate change. And we need to be thinking about as many trees, not little new ones, big old ones, are really wonderful. Somebody should go look at a real development that actually kept the trees, and is one of the most beautiful in the city, and that's Little Eagle Bay, where they have beautiful, beautiful, old, tall trees. I'm sick of seeing them taken down. And I'm sick of being in a ward where only the merchants count.
Thank you, Ms. Lures. Janice Rusati is up next, to be followed by Karen Yecos. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so grateful for the chance to have this public forum. I grew up here in Burlington, and I'm not a speaker, I'm a singer. So I'd like to make a very short song out of this. It's time to put it to a vote now. Put it to a vote. Time to listen to your constituents, and put it to a vote. We must put it to a vote now. Let's put it to a vote. Time to listen to all your constituents, and put it to a vote. Thank you.
Great singing voice.
Thank you so much.
Karen Yecos, to be followed by Liz Curry.
Yeah, the rest of you didn't have to follow, someone sang.
Can you top that?
That was great. I don't think so. I'm Karen Yecos. I'm the executive director of Local Motion, and I'm here representing them. I'm not going to weigh in on the design. And I think that's kind of the point of what I have to say. I wasn't really involved in all of that. I did monitor it and watch it from my house in Underhill, because I do come into the city. But I did not participate in a lot of the planning, and there certainly was a lot of it. But what I do want to say is that we support a park that is accessible to all people, all kinds of people, all abilities, all sizes. And I think I will leave the design for someone else to speak to. The ballot item, as I understand it, basically reverses what you all decided on. And it also, in some ways, I think, maybe negates, to some degree, the public process that got us to this place, that started, as I understand it, in 2012. And I think that's, that's sort of a shame, because there was a lot of public process. This was part of the Great Streets Plan that's out there. It is part of several revisions, and a lot of give and take that got us to this place. I think it sets a bad precedent for the city, a city that's trying to evolve, and change, and grow, as most cities will and need to, and to become what it's going to be in the future. From Local Motion's point of view, we are advocating for that kind of change and growth, and becoming who the city is going and becoming who the city is going to be, whether it's things that we care about for biking and walking or amenities that help make it easier for people and safer to do that in the cities. And I think a reliable, fair, public process that we can all count on is, and the decision-making that goes along with that is really important. It really matters. And I think that's the decision before you right now, is the voices that maybe are not in the room right now and a process that works that we can depend on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Liz Curry is up next, to be followed by Jessie Tipton. Good evening, Ms. Curry, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you all for going through this. Again, I'd especially like to thank Councilor Nodelle for heeding the concerns of the folks who wanted to slow down last summer, working with the group that drafted the resolution to create an ad hoc committee that reopened this important discussion. As an elected official and as a former planning commissioner, I appreciate the extensive public process and transparency that you all have created and gone through over the past six years. I know what it's like to have plans that flowed from participatory processes jettisoned by new voices that appear late in the process. I am one of the latecomers, and we can't all focus on all issues all the time, so we do entrust others to represent our views when we can't participate. In this case, I was one of those who entrusted others, but when I had some time to focus on the park design at the DRB last year, I grew concerned about numerous issues. And I also just want to echo the concerns expressed by Wayne Senville, who mentored me on the Planning Commission, and Kathleen Ryan, who I think are very thoughtful and longtime public servants with a deep expertise in this area. My concerns mainly center on too many uses that dismantle the historic design, which convert the passive recreational space to an overly active one. But mainly, I want to endorse the request to place this on the ballot for a public vote, so the issue is elevated for all of those who have not had the time to attend public meetings and participate in this. And it's a monumental change to our civic space that I think does require a slower process. It was frustrating for me, being on the Planning Commission, to have to learn that. But when there is a significant change, we're talking about generations to come and climate changes to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Jessie Tipton is up next, to be followed by James Lees. Mr. Tipton here. Okay, in the meantime, James Lees, come on up. Welcome, Mr. Lees.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Right here in Vermont, we're facing an extreme form of voter suppression, not just suppression of some of the voters. Here, the question is whether the vote of the entire electorate will be suppressed on the plan to put the city in debt to remake City Hall Park, supposedly based on a recent Supreme Court case. But that case did not mention debt, borrowed money, or bonds. That case was about a nickname for which the court said the school board had sole decision-making authority, and it was in no way, shape, or form up to the voters to decide. But issuing bonds is a matter for the voters. The city council is not the sole decider on whether to issue bonds. The question of issuing a bond and its purpose is brought to the voters under the Burlington City Charter. Nor can money from bonds approved for one purpose be transferred for use for another. In this case, the city announced it will transfer money from three different voter-approved bonds for three different purposes, to make up for the $4.6 million cost of renovating City Hall Park. The authority is not entirely with the council, it's shared with the voters. So the rule in the South Burlington case does not apply when bonds are involved. The 3,300 Burlington voters who signed petitions should be respected. The right of the people to vote on a petitioned ballot item regarding a project funded by bonds should be respected. The right of the people to vote is a check and balance on abuses of money and power and should be respected. So I urge the council to let the people vote, put the petitioned item on the ballot.
Thank you, Mr. Lees. Paul Buschner is up next, to be followed by Joanne Hunt. Did you find Mr. Tipton? Okay, you can speak right after Mr. Buschner.
My name is Paul Buschner, resident of Ward Four, and I came to express a couple of issues, the first being the Downtown Improvement District. We encourage that the city move forward with that as expeditiously as possible. In light of the development that we're facing in our surrounding communities, we need to do everything we can to strengthen our downtown and unify, have unified efforts to promote our city and both for recreational opportunities, events, advertising, keeping businesses in our community, and enhancing our downtown for all of our residents. And then I also wanted to support, express my support for the new design in City Hall Park. I'm sure it's not absolutely perfect. No design will be, but it is a welcoming, well-designed, beautiful space, the new proposal. And thirdly, I would say, I think that we need a better way of bringing ballot items before the public so that wording of these things cannot be prejudicially biased by the group bringing them forward. We need to, other than just having them vetted by the city attorney, I'm absolutely in favor of allowing ballot items to come before the public, but I am concerned about the potential for bias and prejudice in the wording of those questions under our current system.
Thank you, Mr. Buschner. Before Joanne Hunt comes, come on up if you are authorized to speak for Mr. Tipton for...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you. So, the way I understand Mr. Tipton's feelings, he's a homeless man that's been hanging, has been part of the Burlington community for 10 years, spent a lot of time in City Hall Park. And he reports to me, it's his experience, that he's encountered a lot of hostility from city officials. And in particular, there's concern about class divisions here. I just was really shocked by the comment, and I could have been completely wrong, but there was a speaker before me who mentioned not bringing children into the park for obvious reasons. I'm hoping she's talking about cracked sidewalks and that sort of thing, because if she's talking about the homeless people, I have to tell you that the one thing that you can, everyone can do is to be friendly. The homeless people in this city are not mean people. They are not cruel people. They are not dangerous people. They may be off a little bit from your standpoint as a middle-class person. Maybe you don't understand mental illness very well. Maybe you don't understand addiction very well. But these are human beings, and for us to talk about them as if they were something to be avoided and purged out of the park is really disgusting.
Thank you, Mr. Joanne Hunt. Come on up. Ms. Hunt, welcome, to be followed by Kayla Gokee. Good evening, Ms. Hunt.
Hi, I'm Joanne Hunt. I lived in Burlington for a long time. I haven't been here for a while, and I must confess, I've had a lot of other stuff going on in my life, so I haven't been able to keep up with all of the details of this as possible, which is another reason why I want it to be on the ballot. I think you talk about all the process you've had over the years, and I'm not saying that you haven't, but for a lot of different reasons, not everybody gets to participate in that. I also think it's a little bit odd when people say it's just a small group of disgruntled people have done this. 3,300 people is not a small group. I also just really want to appreciate all the work that all the people have done on this, because it is a lot of work, and it's, I think what we want is an engaged democracy. So it just seems really odd to me that you would somehow not want more people to be able to participate in whatever way we can, which is by putting it on the ballot. The other thing, I guess I want to say as a healthcare provider, is we decide all things all the time a couple of years ago, and then all of a sudden it changes, and we have to readapt. We can't just say, "Well, we made this decision, let's go forward with it." If new information comes in, and if other stuff comes in, we have to adjust. So please put it on the ballot. The other thing I want to say doesn't have anything to do with that, as a nurse practitioner and as somebody who lives off of North Avenue, I think we really need to do something about getting lighted crosswalks on there sooner rather than later. I think there should be some kind of temporary fix, even if it's me going and putting Christmas lights up. I drive down their home from work many nights from Colchester, and it's shocking how difficult it is to see, even if people are just walking like on the sidewalk. And I know there's some kind of investigation going on or something, but I think that's another area that we really need to act on more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Kayla Gokee, to be followed by Ann Taylor. Good evening, Ms. Gokee, welcome.
Hello. So there have been a lot of important and active people in the community to speak, and I am here simply as a mother. I'm born and raised in Burlington, as was my father, and I have two children that I'm raising in Burlington. I'm very proud to be raising the next generation in Burlington. And I want to specifically focus on the Water Jet Fountain and the proposed design. I think that this proposal is great for tourists and people who are planning on going to City Hall Park, but it is a nightmare for local parents who commute through the park. My scenario right now is that I live in the South End. My parents live in the Old North End, and we walk, I walk, I do not drive through City Hall Park to go to Church Street, to go to church on Sundays and to visit my parents and other family members. And my scenario right now is that it is one of the few places that I can let go of my son's hand and let him run free for a few minutes and not have to be worried about driveways or oncoming traffic and be a little boy in our long commute to visit my parents. And the people, that some people are worried about, the vagabonds, the homeless, the undesirables, those people go up to my son and say, "Hello, young man, I hope you have a great day." And by the way, the tourists and the business owners on Church Street do not do that. So I appreciate those people in the park. With the Water Jet Fountain, I am terrified to walk through the park in the summer and let go of my son's hand, because him, like me, and I'm sure a lot of us when we were children, will go straight to those water fountains and get soaking wet and be drenched from head to foot. And so I am pro-development in Burlington. I am just against the Water Jet Fountain in City Hall, and I think that we need to give Burlington the right to vote on this. I think that we need to give Burlington parents the right to vote on this design, whether they agree with all of it, agree with some of it, or don't agree with any of it, it is our right to vote on this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Taylor is up next, to be followed by Kevin Deuterman. Good evening, Ms. Taylor. And welcome.
Hi. Many of you know who I am, as the woman who chained herself to the tree on the waterfront to save it. And, you know, one of the deep emotional aspect of that was the fact that I think the human being does not respect nature. And it seems like, as we know, we do have a president who, oh, I don't believe in science. And we all have to be more respectful of nature. And I do thank all of you. The amount of work you all do is amazing, so thank you. Now, the park, it's not simple. I want to see kids have a little space there. I don't think, I might not be using the right words. The water jet in this picture looks like it's way too large. We definitely need bathrooms and make the spray water jet smaller. Seating is important, and as a physical therapist, the accessibility is so important, and the slope is too high presently. So fixing the slope and improving accessibility is great. And I'm actually not a fan of the farmer's market being there. I would like to see it on the waterfront. And shade, many people have mentioned how important shade is. I love big trees, and all we see in Burlington is all the big trees coming down. So maybe we could save a couple more of the big trees. In fact, one of the important things of the new design is that there will be a variety of trees with different heights, and we need seating for the shade. So let's not take down all the big trees. And it's very sad we lost that big old tree on the waterfront, and let's take it to the vote. The vote is five weeks away. Let's listen to what people want.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Kevin Deuterman is up next, to be followed by Donna Walters and Monique Fordham speaking together. Good evening, Mr. Deuterman, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Is this good? Okay, cool. So I'm Kevin Deuterman. I'm from Ward Three. I'm just a guy trying to understand what's going on. I'm here to share my thoughts on the City Place update from last week. Going into the update, some major things that, you know, we, as the public, knew. The demolition was completed in August of 2018, about six months ago. The projected opening date was January, so right now. And Synex and Devonwood claimed many reasons for this delay, but the following seemed the most kind of concrete and understandable to me. Asbestos cleanup was pretty expensive, an investor backed out, and there's an interest rate increase that's affected their budgeting. And then even after the council modified, sorry, modified the contract with them, he claims that Brookfield delayed the action to continue construction. And what we learned in the update was that Brookfield's role as 51% owner changed. They're going to take a more hands-on role and remain involved and will be our new primary contact. They ensured us that they're moving forward, and they also want it done as soon as possible and aim to break ground in the spring. So there's been a number of verified and unexpected hurdles, but, you know, I want to know what the real setbacks were, what the fiction was. It seems like there's been a lot of guesswork, a lot of stuff floating around, you know. So assuming construction begins according to plan and without any more unforeseen obstacles, as of now, what impacts will this nine-month delay have down the road for the finances of Burlington? I haven't heard much talk about that, and that's what's most concerning to me. Not only do we have a hole, it's, you know, it's, I feel, going to be felt for a while. I just want to keep that in mind going forward. I hope the answers come out, and I hope that the executive session was constructive and illuminating for you guys, because it was disappointing to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Deuterman. And while this is not a back and forth, you can certainly call or contact any of us, and we can give you some further elaboration on what we can. Thank you. Donna Walters and Monique Fordham, to be followed by Lynn, and we'll double the time for them.
Hi, I'm Donna Walters. I'm from Keep the Park Green. Keep the Park Green has been involved with this process early on. We're not newcomers or late to the process. We've been following every step of the way, attending over 40 meetings, asking for more information, taking the deep dive into planning documents and budget details, and hoping you would address our concerns. Stop asking for public engagement if you don't have any intention of using it. And while you're at it, stop saying you compromised with us on the ad hoc committee. If you were serious about a compromise, then why did you tie the hands of the committee and insist that there could be no design changes? The tree cutting and paving problems are design problems. We were sidelined then, and you're still trying to sideline us now. Let's not, let's cut to the chase. The root of the problem really stems from the nepotism. Nepotism is corruption. It's when those with power and influence steer jobs to their relatives and friends. This plan was conceived by Burlington City Arts, a city department. In 2011, BCA got a $50,000 federal national endowment for the arts grant to begin the process of imagining City Hall Park. Right out of the gate, they hired Keith Wagner as a landscape designer. He got a $20,000 no-bid contract. What they didn't mention was that he's the husband of Sarah Katz, BCA Assistant Director. And since Katz and Wagner don't have the same last name, who would know? And how did Wagner get around another no-bid contract for over a half a million dollars? The city hired sous-man, urban design, for the Great Streets project, and then they subcontracted to Wagner... to Wagner's firm. The conflict of interest has pitted the needs of the community against BCA because it has prioritized the desires of BCA over the needs of the community. You are elected officials. Let this happen under your watch and we will be holding you to a high ethical standard and we expect you to address the nepotism issue.
Okay, I'm Monique Fordham. I have to read really fast now. Also, the funding sources for the project have changed three times over the past month. Why are there so many last-minute changes? If the city can't keep its story straight on finances, how could the public possibly be able to figure it out? When was the public going to be told that the price tag has now jumped from $4 million to $4.6 million? And when was the city going to tell the public about the soil contamination that we found in the fine print of the most recent budget report from the Finance Committee that states, and I quote, "Soil testing in recent years in preparation for a potential City Hall Park renovation has found contaminants in the upper levels of the soil that exceeds levels allowed by the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation that would require some level of remediation regardless of whether or not the renovation goes forward." How long have people been sitting and children playing on contaminated topsoil? Despite these claims to the contrary, this process has not been transparent. The people who signed the petition think the plan cuts too many trees, paves too much green space, is too expensive, and would destroy the historic character of the park. We can have a much better plan for less. We've played by the rules. We vetted the petition language with the city attorney back in August. We collected much more than the required number of signatures and we made the rounds of every NPA who all voted to put it on the ballot. But now at the 11th hour, some councillors are trying to change the language, take out the second clause that stipulates what the voters do want so they can characterize us as being the people who are against everything. That's unethical and I really hope that this council will respect the rights of the voters who put their trust in you and also the democratic process in Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters and Ms. Fordham. Kate Keo. Kate Keo is up next to be followed by George Russell. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Is this good?
Yes.
I need to read notes. I joined Keep the Park Green because I disagreed with all the trees coming down. I'm here to ask you to let the people of Burlington vote on this project. It's a multimillion-dollar project and it deserves to have the people's say. It is not yet reflective of what the people want. There really should be no rush on this project. I hear people saying, oh, it's been a long time. I've worked in the design business my whole adult life. This is not a long time. As Kathleen Ryan said, you know, she quoted other design philosophies that should be respected, including the fact that this park is on the National Registry of Historic Places. Is that correct? I mean, does that just get forgotten? I don't get it. It hasn't been a long time. The people have not had a chance to really understand it. Most people don't understand floor plans. Most people have not been through design school and don't understand a three-foot tree versus a 30-foot tree in a plan. And it really would be irresponsible for the city councillors not to listen to what the people want. This is a multimillion-dollar project that will impact the city for generations to come and I'm asking you to let the people vote on it. In the meanwhile, I would like to see water in the fountain in front of City Hall, which has been dry for years. Thank you. Please let the people vote on this.
Thank you, Ms. Keo. George Russell to be followed by Springer Harris. Please be respectful.
My name is George Russell. I'm here with my wife Judy. We live in Ward Three. We're in the park at least twice a day. I'm a seventh-generation Vermonter. I come from a farming family and my analogies about what's before you is about related to farming, passion, balance, long timeframe. Passion, passion for, as exhibited in this room. The reason I'm here speaking, I've never done this before, is because after 17 moves my wife and I have made, we've chosen to move back to Vermont nine years ago and we intend to live and die here. So we are engaged in this process. This park in the city is important to us and we've been involved in all of the back-and-forth that you've had to wrestle with and that leads to balance. Balance in farming is the different sides of nature. Mother Nature told us something when the trees had to come down through Mother Nature in a storm. And that sends us a warning signal that something has to be done. The balance you have to do to balance the different constituencies and different interests, you have a thankless job and you're doing it well. I think, we think, you've balanced well all the various needs, which comes back to timing. One of the places that of the 17 moves that my wife and I have made was to France. And I heard this story of a French farmer had a lot of land and he asked his, wanted to have a nice row of trees leading up to his farmhouse, tall, shady, impressive, welcoming. And he asked his workmen, farmhands, he says, how long will it take for those trees to reach a sufficient height to really be impressive? The answer was 30 years. He said, in that case, you better start right now.
Thank you very much. Springer Harris is up next to be followed by Steve Goodkind. Good evening, Mr. Harris. Welcome.
I'd like to start by saying thank you all for what you do. Thank you for being city councillors. Thank you for representing our wards. I really appreciate it. I've sat here and watched you patiently listen to the community for two hours. You have families at home, you have things that you'd like to do and I just really appreciate you taking the time. During open forum, I'd like to talk to you about the park. My wife and I, we moved here in 2012, at which point we first learned about the redevelopment of the park. And then through being the president of the Burlington Rotary Club, the Burlington Rotary has a very special connection with the park. We have, prior to me being a member, paid for all of the rubbish receptacles in the park and for as long as anyone can remember, have spent one weekend every spring on our hands and knees planting annuals in the park for everybody. So we've spent a lot of time there. I've personally been covered in dirt, hands and knees, planting plants for the community in the park. I was also had the opportunity through the Rotary Club to be at the press conference on October 28, 2015, at the top of BCA when the original plans were announced for the new design of the park. And since 2015, that has gone through a rigorous process. Most people standing here, sitting here, have been a part of that process. I've seen that process since 2012. While I have not been a part of it, I've had many opportunities to be and have seen it in the public. With that said, I would like to see you move forward with the plans for the park as it is. I think that it has gone through enough review and I look forward to you doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Steve Goodkind is up next to be followed by Alex Levin. Good evening, Mr. Goodkind. Welcome.
Thank you, President Wright. I've got three or four things. First, how about the sidewalks of Burlington? Much of the city looks like one giant slip for mankind at this point. It doesn't have to be that way and it shouldn't be that way. And I think you people ought to take a more proactive role to see that it isn't. Then, oops, is this mic off?
No, you're not loud enough.
I'm not loud enough? Okay. Then there's the mayor's next step in transferring public property to the private sector. His Brexit-like proposal would wrestle governance of the marketplace from the tyranny of citizen control. Realizing that this might be a tough sell, the administration is resorting to their tried-and-true strategy. They subprime it by combining this proposal with the more palatable idea of expanding the marketplace district. We've seen this done in Burlington many times with Burlington Telecom, Town Center, Southern Connector, waterfront, the F-35s, Keep the Park Green. The voters deserve more respect than the continued manipulation of ballot items. We can have an expanded marketplace without the governance changes. Either withdraw this proposal or at least separate the governance from the district expansion proposal. That's probably won't be my final thing, but finally, Keep the Park Green, put that initiative on the ballot. It's advisory. The petitioners have done their work. Let the voters weigh in. Once it's done, you'll have all the time in the world to make your decision as to what you want to do and how this is going to proceed. And maybe finally, can you please take down those billboards around that hole in the ground downtown? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodkind. Alex Levin is up next to be followed by Lynn Bressford.
Mr. City Council President. Thank you for hearing me. Please pass along my warm regards for a Happy New Year to all of your associates. You all haven't seen me for a while because you've been doing such a fantastic job. There are good things to be said and I don't like to just come and bother you when I'm mad. Taking another swing at the Memorial Auditorium, taking another swing at the Moran plant, these are really important things. There are aspects of the Great Streets BTV plan that are necessary updates. They're great updates, they're welcome. You might be seeing some of them on St. Paul Street, which seems to be taking forever. But then, you know, you do run into a project every now and again that the liabilities just outweigh the merits. And it's obvious, I think, this is one of those projects. I'm not here to waste your time with another, you know, one more against, but I am asking you to put it on the ballot. Here's my personal experience with this and how it's amounted to a kind of indecision on my part and a little bit of disillusionment, you know. Last winter, I reached out to the mayor's office regarding the health of the mature shade trees in the park. He quickly connected me with Vijay Komai, your city's arborist. We met one bitterly cold morning at 7:00 a.m. and we knelt down around a bunch of trees and felt roots that were strangled and we felt some poor tree health and things like that. And I basically believed my city's administration, my city's official, and I said, oh, it's too late, they're dead. But now I'm hearing at the 11th hour from Keep the Park Green, who has enlisted a certified arborist. I just want to underline for you that that's not something that a bunch of cranky people with nothing better to do do. That's something that people who really care about the health of their park do. They've pointed out to us that there are in fact more trees that can be salvaged in the park than the city's arborist admits to. And that points to me that unlike the Moran plant and the Memorial Auditorium, the preservation of the assets that this property possesses has not been prioritized in this plan. And that's why it should be put before the people. If you're confident in your plan, prove it.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Lynn Bressford is up next to be followed by Zoraya Hightower. Good evening. Welcome.
I remember when Bill Aswad made the first one of these.
I'm sorry?
Yes. Bill Aswad made the first timer. This is like out of plywood. That was a long time ago. Anyway, I have the unique position of being a city employee since 1987, a downtown employee since 1983, and homeowner at the Vermont House condominium across the street for the last 10 years. And I never want to spend time in City Hall Park. And I would love to come out with a library book and sit in the park and read and it's just unsavory. It's just, I don't know, the people from working here at City Hall, we see people urinate in the window wells all along this alleyway in the park of the building. There are people out there with bullwhips. There's been people out there with violent. I remember working one night and some guy was beaten over the head with a pipe. And then we had various other groups of people that have been in the park over the years, the fish heads, you know, they're harmless, but still, it just attracts a very interesting group of people. And I'd like to say that perhaps the, looking back, I remember City Market was contested. Everybody was against the bike path. Everybody was against the Willard Street Inn. Everybody thought, all these things, which I think everybody now appreciates, have grown into be part of the community. And I think we need to move forward with this City Hall Park and having another vote on it is just going to delay it longer. And also I'll say Warren Spinner, who I love for putting up all the linden trees that you smell in the middle of the summer when you're walking down to the waterfront, that is like nirvana. And if his opinion was that some of these trees need to come down, then I think he knew what he was talking about.
Thank you very much. Zoraya Hightower to be followed by Judy Sanders. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I was not part of the many citizens and civil servants who were part of designing, revising, and debating the park. So first just want to say a huge thank you to all of those who were a part of that process. This is besides the point, I know, but as a master of environmental management, I do approve and am a fan of the design of the park. Also, as an African-American citizen, I don't think it's racist despite other comments that have been made. Generally based on the comments I'm hearing, I do not believe that the voices against the park could come up with a design that I would enjoy, nor I think that would be cohesive and enjoyable to the most other Burlington citizens. The tree argument in particular seems very myopic to me. I do hope to see new saplings coming into the park. I do hope the park continues to take recommendations from citizens, including inclusivity, particularly for homeless members. I do know that that's an issue that the park faces and I think recommendations from the citizens behind me are extremely valuable. I also appreciate the voices of Keep the Park Green. I think their input has been extremely valuable throughout the process. That said, I think those voices have been heard. I've never had to say no so often to signing a ballot before. I do appreciate the passion that is behind that, but I do not want to see this on a ballot again. I don't, I don't believe that another vote, especially considering some of the bias issues that were brought up before, would be a valuable addition to the public process. I think that this has gone through a scientific and due process, public process, and I'm a fan of the current plan as it stands.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hightower. Judy Sanders is up next to be followed by Matt Ennis. Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So I am here in support of putting the ballot item or putting it on the ballot. The biggest thing to me is what I notice since this administration has come into power is that there are very few things that go to the ballot. And it seems to be that there is a certain amount of power over the city council, so it kind of always goes the way of the mayor. But unfortunately, the mayor, while he is an elected official, he represents all of us and we have, we might not agree on everything that he says and everything that he wants. And while maybe this side of the room does, you are more, there's more to this city than just what is in this room. So many people have signed this petition asking for it to go on the ballot and it should go on the ballot. You know, we talk about gentrification, which the, and here's the thing, there are things in the current design that I like, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't still listen to the rest of the people who want something different. And as far as gentrification goes for the marketplace, this kind of weighs into it a little bit. And I get a little concerned because I look at this panel here. You know, it's, it might not, it's not going to, gentrification doesn't affect anybody on here, you know? That's really, really important. You need to listen to the people and represent everybody, not just those in your demographic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Matt Ennis. Matt Ennis is followed by the final speaker, Ben Chaviri. Good evening, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Ennis. I just want to thank you for being politicians and sitting here for so long.
Excuse me. Pull the microphone in, please.
Sorry. I want to thank you for the work you're doing and for being here so long. I'm an activist, I'm not a politician, and I don't know how you do this for so long. It's quite amazing. So thank you for that. I was a cut flower vendor in this farmer's market in the 90s, throughout the 90s. And I just want to say that the farmer's market vendors and being in the park has been really hard on the park and it's caused a lot of compaction. And it's caused a lot of compaction, and I think it's not the best thing for the upkeep of the park. And what would be better is to get the park, it's already on St. Paul Street now because it's gotten bigger, put it onto College Street as well, and have it around the park, because I think it needs to be central. But it needs to be out of the park, and that way, the parking regenerate. And I think that's the way for the park to be healthier in the long run. I want to speak about the resolution that we put forward about City Hall Park Plan, and this should be on the March ballot as it is written. Over 3,300 people signed the petition. That represents over 8% of the Burlington electorate. We only needed 5%. We have over 8% that voted. There is nothing deceptive in the language of this resolution. The second clause, I've heard you might want to take it out, and it says, "Instead, repair, maintain, and improve the park by preserving more existing trees in shaded areas, repairing grass, existing walkways, increasing lighting and benches, and retaining the historic character of the park." I don't feel like that's deceptive. I think that should remain as we've, as people have signed it, and people just have the chance. And just to address the public input that you've had all along, I think that a lot of people didn't know what was going on, and the details were not known until late in the game, and I feel like people should have a chance to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr....
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. The final speaker tonight is Ben Travers. Good evening, Mr. Travers. Welcome.
My name is Ben Travers. I'm a Ward Five resident. I serve on the Ward Five NPA Steering Committee, but I'm not here wearing that hat. I'm wearing the hat of a resident. I'm wearing the hat of a dad of two young kids. We use the park. We like to use the park. We'd like to use the park a lot better if the current plan went through. We love the current plan. I have visions of sitting on a new park bench, watching our two kids run through the splash pad. Yes, I understand the sentiments that perhaps they'll get soaked at times when I don't want them to get soaked, but we can have those debates, and that's exactly what we've been doing over the last few months and years. In that process, Keep the Park Green has secured important, good concessions. They didn't get everything they wanted, but neither did anyone else. That's how these processes work. The merits of the plan are not what this is about, though. Generally speaking, advisory ballot measures seem silly to me. We should not use the ballot box as a survey tool. If you want to take a survey, go out and take a survey. That said, if we are to allow these types of questions, we should at least ensure they are presented in a fair and impartial manner. Three years ago, I was against placing the North Avenue ballot question on the ballot. I will at least acknowledge, however, that the question was worded in a neutral manner with valuable advice from the city attorney. Compare the question passed by the city council then. Shall the city be advised to keep four lanes open to motor vehicles on North Avenue? Neutrally worded, received an honest answer. Now, what if that question was worded this way, more like that which is presented by Keep the Park Green? Shall the city cancel the current plan for North Avenue and instead repair existing potholes and sidewalks and promote easier commutes for residents of the new North End? What do you think would have happened then? A number of people are talking about putting "it" or putting "the park" on the ballot, but what is "it"? The wording of the ballot question proposed by Keep the Park Green is not neutrally presented as it should be. It is not designed to solicit an honest assessment of public opinion. I'm troubled that leaders of the movement have expressed unwillingness to modify its proposed question. Democracy will not be served by language skewed to secure a victory for this group's own vision of its own park plan, which is presented as the only option to, quote-unquote, "instead repair, maintain, and improve the park." Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Travers. With that, that will conclude tonight's public forum at 9:05. And, yes, and we will now move on to deliberative agenda. I'm going to take just a one... I'm sorry? Yes, the consent agenda. I understand. Consent agenda is the next item on the agenda, on our agenda. Counselor Nodell.
President Wright, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as amended and take the actions as indicated.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Busher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda and taking the actions indicated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. I'm going to take just a one-minute break. Just one minute. Okay. We are back reconvening the regular city council meeting, and please, audience members, audience members, please, we need... Okay, we're back on the regular agenda. Item 4.02 is public hearings that are required. This is the second set of public hearings on the proposed charter changes. And the first public hearing that I'm going to open is on the business personal property tax phasing out of the business personal property tax. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the charter change dealing with phasing out of the business personal property tax? Going once, going twice, we'll close out that public hearing. The second public hearing, next charter change, is the charter change dealing with creation of a Department of Permitting and Inspections and making the zoning administrator and planning director a mayoral appointment. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this proposed charter change to go on the town meeting day ballot in March? Hearing none. We will close out that public hearing. The final charter change proposal is, I think, is going to have, in fact, I know it's going to have some people speaking because I have people signed up to speak. The final one is dealing with the downtown improvement district, and so I will open that public hearing, and I'm going to, as we did in the public forum, I have a list of people who want to speak. If you would like to have your name added, fill out a sheet over here, and Lori will get it up to me. So I'm going to open that public hearing up and ask for Walter... Walter Cady? Walter, are you out there?
Did you say Walter?
Walter, there you are. Walter.
Thank you for calling me. I was upstairs trying to get down, and I apologize for the delay.
That's okay. Welcome.
I want to thank you for providing some time for comments again. I'm Walter Cady. I live in the old North End in the Central District. I spoke about a month ago about the downtown improvement district, and I'm hoping to make some similar points because I don't think too much has changed, and I'm still considering this issue very seriously. I believe the process surrounding the charter change for creating this district has been irresponsible. We received too little debate time and publicly accessible information, except from perhaps the business community who have a clear personal stake in this change. In December, for instance, there was a mention of transferring information from a Dropbox account to Front Porch Forum. I'm not sure if that happened or not. It may well have, but both of these options are insufficient. One requires familiarity with cloud computing and the other with coordinated messaging across segmented listservs, and both of those measures are passive communication, and they put the onus on us to find them, seek them out, and weigh through the issues. I think that's unacceptable for a charter change of this nature. And that raises a second point to me, which is the... Excuse me, I'm just trying to read my notes, but it raises a second point that the information requires about this charter change, I mean, requires really in-depth legal and regulatory knowledge. And I mean, this might be especially true with the author to establish a still private 501(c)(6) for management. The nuances of that management proposal are overly complex, and we don't have sufficient time to weigh through the issues and weigh them before this measure will come to a vote. The council may be privy to legal advice and interpretation as needed, but we are not. I think this is evidenced by the council calling a last-minute interruption in the December DID discussion simply to determine if all members understood what they were voting on. I think this not only demonstrates the complexity of the issue, but it emphasizes the council's inappropriate and poorly understood approach to implementing this district. I mean, I feel that if you all can't understand it and need additional time, it's unfair to expect us to do it. We need more active and robust voter education before the council pursues drastic changes to city ownership and land use. I think anything less than that is a little haphazard and close to reckless. A recent seven-days piece quoted council members voicing their frustration about citizens placing referenda on the ballot without council input first, and I think it ought to cut both ways. I hope you please remove the DID charter change from the ballot until the council can provide voters with meaningful information and discussion about the drastic changes to our public goods and our economic well-being. We ought to table this discussion, and we ought to treat citizens as equal partners in our democracy.
Thank you, Mr. Cady. Betsy McGavis. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Again, I'm Betsy. I'm a senior at UVM. I was up in your inboxes today, so thanks for that space, too. But basically, I also want to talk about public process. You know, the park has had years of public input, and now thousands of people have even still come forward and asked us to put a vote on it, and you know, that should, of course, be honored, but... And the DID proposal has been a work in process for a little while, but it has certainly not been subject to such an in-depth process, and it still feels really unfinished, especially given, you know, the edits made in just like the last few weeks. We haven't explored a public expanded option for this, and even so, there is nothing in place in this proposal that guarantees that homeless community members won't be harassed like they are in other cities with business improvement districts. There is nothing in this proposal that guarantees that rent prices won't go up in the district and the surrounding neighborhoods. There really hasn't been a discussion at all of what will happen to rent prices in this district. It's not been at the forefront of these conversations, however, like, it's absolutely been at the forefront of individuals' lives in Burlington for a long time. Because we don't have the details of the outcome of the DID, because these issues are not being addressed in the current proposal, this absolutely needs more time, and I urge you to, again, table this discussion before putting it on the ballot on March 5th. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Casey Gilbert is up next. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Esteemed councilors, my name's Casey Gilbert. I'm the Executive Director of Portland Downtown in Portland, Maine. No stranger to Burlington, though. I'm a UVM alumni, very proudly so, and normally, when I'm up here, I'd be staying at North Beach Campground, but it was a little chilly on this visit, so I have some warmer accommodations down the street. And during my gap year, in 1997, I was here and braved the ice storm, which some of you probably remember. But why I'm here today is because Portland Downtown itself is a downtown improvement district in Portland, Maine, and I have some fellow colleagues here in Burlington. And over the past several weeks, I've been meeting with some counselors, some stakeholders, just so that they could ask me some questions about our model. And so I'm not here today to advocate one way or the other. I'm just here to tell you a little bit about my experience and hope that that might help. And I'll be around later as well. If you have any questions after I finish or throughout the course of the night, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
And could you pull the... I'm sorry. Could you pull the microphone in a little closer, please?
Oh, absolutely. So my love for downtowns actually started while I was at the University of Vermont. My bachelor's degree is in community development and applied economics, and I worked and volunteered with Main Street programs over the years in New Hampshire, in Florida, and now am proudly living in Portland, Maine. What I hear from stakeholders in your community is that they love Burlington. This is an issue about passion, about preservation, and also looking forward to the future and how you can make your city the best that it can be, in your downtown, which is the heart center of your city. So I guess what I want to reflect on today is our model, which is a 501(c)(4). That's an independent nonprofit organization that's separate from the city. We're funded through supplemental tax on property owners, similar to the Church Street Marketplace. But as an independent 501(c)(4) nonprofit organization, the very people that pay the supplemental tax are the ones that help develop the budget and the programs and services. And the 501(c)(4) is special because the focus is really social welfare. So we make sure that our programs and services are not just of a benefit to our property owners and stakeholders, but a benefit to the wider community. And our cadet program is an example of that. I know that you have one here as well. I believe the independent nonprofit organization, the 501(c)(4), really allows us to be very nimble and creative, but our partnership with the city allows for transparency, and every year, we have an annual review, and we go in front of the city council to have our master and supplemental services contract approved. So there's this deep partnership and understanding and respect with the city. They realize that the downtown improvement district brings an added benefit and greater outcomes for the downtown as far as economic development and social welfare. Also, our 501(c)(4) being independent really allows us to leverage partnerships, not only with the private sector, but also with other nonprofits and social service organizations. And so that's what I enjoy about our model and think that it's valuable. So I know you have a tough decision before you, but I'm sure you all have your love for Burlington in mind, and that's how you'll make your decision this evening. I did bring our annual report here because it's impossible for me to cover our complete mission to keep downtown Portland clean, safe, and vibrant, and to succinctly represent that in a couple of minutes. But our focus is really to make our community better, and I think we do that with a really healthy partnership with the city while remaining independent as a 501(c)(4) nonprofit. So again, I thank you for your time today to allow me to come speak in front of you, and happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I'll leave these annual reports. They might answer some more questions that you have as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert, and we're glad you're enjoying the balmy weather here. Cara Al-Nazari is up next, to be followed by Springer Harris. Good evening and welcome.
My name's Cara Al-Nazari. I'm a small business owner on College Street. My business is about 1,000 square feet. I have three young women who work for me. I'm here to speak in favor of the downtown improvement district in hopes that it does become a ballot item in March. I believe that an expanded downtown improvement district could add a level of cohesiveness and economic vitality that's currently lacking in the downtown. If you have a business on the side street, there's very much an us-and-them mentality. There's Church Street, and there's everyone else. And I, like all my small business owners around me, work seven days a week, and we work on very tight margins. And I'm really hoping that I can take some of that money from my margins and bring it in to a pool. I believe that we're not big business here. We're all small business owners. We want to tax ourselves to enhance the services in this city. I have no interest in sanitizing the streets or kicking out the homeless. I imagine an improved and expanded DID dovetailing with organizations like the Howard Street Outreach, perhaps even becoming a funding source for it, and also enhancing and beautifying the city. Think flower baskets, think holiday lighting, think more activities for children and shoppers and residents and tourists. I don't want to be part of a group that would take over any responsibilities that the Burlington Police Department currently has. I have no interest in that. My interest would be to have all of us local small business owners pool our money and help to make our community more cohesive and more vibrant. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Springer Harris is up next, to be followed by Sarah Beal. Good evening again, Mr. Harris. Welcome.
Before I read my testimony, I would like to read the testimony of one of our DIDAC members, Rich Price. Would that be okay?
Yes.
My name is Rich Price, and I am proud to serve as a member of the DIDAC. I ask that my statement be read in abstentia. In our meeting on Friday, January 25th, the DIDAC affirmed its support for the proposal as presented. I'm grateful for the constructive conversation by many committed community members, including the disparate members of the DIDAC, who are focused on a more vibrant Burlington with improved walkability, cleaner and safer streetscapes, and a more productive partnership between the city and downtown businesses, the engine of any local economy. As the Director of Brand Services at Burlington-based brand development firm Select Design, I also see the new DID entity as a nonprofit whose primary service is to meet the critical need for downtown marketing and branding. As Burlington evolves and as the definition of downtown changes, we need to bring a cohesive and dynamic brand marketing voice to ensure we continue to lure visitors, businesses, and talent, as well as retain our best high school and college graduates. Finally, as a 10-year resident of Burlington, a father of five boys in the Burlington School District, I strongly support the efforts such as these to work constructively towards Burlington's vibrant future. Signed, Richard Price. I read that because I'm here to represent the DIDAC. I read that because I'm here to represent the DIDAC. Again, my name is Springer Harris. I've been a Ward 4 and Ward 7 resident over the past eight years, and I also work for a small business that's been located inside the current DID for the entire time. I'm also a member of the Development Review Board and have been a part of the DIDAC since we instituted it in June of 2017. I am speaking to you today to represent that committee. I would like to remind the council that the DIDAC was established two years ago by this council to conduct a review of both our current downtown districts, we have two, Church Street and the one that we're talking about, and to contemplate improvements with all the stakeholders, and to ultimately present a proposed plan to improve our downtown's competitive edge. I want to say that it's been a great pleasure to work on the DIDAC and with the council on this project over the past two years. I would like to personally thank each and every one of you for putting in some deep thought and hard work over this process. I know that each one of you take it very seriously. As a DIDAC, we decided to hire the top consulting firm in the country on this topic. Brad Siegel, the founder of Puma, presented to the council multiple times and met with many of you individually. Along with Puma, we conducted public surveys, and we also held many weeks of public stakeholder meetings. You may recall that Brad and his company presented to the council that Burlington's downtown received a report card grade of C. This was not a grade that any of us were prepared for or happy about, including the DIDAC. You may also recall that he said that if we drop below a C, the cost and effort to return to an A is, at minimal, exponentially more expensive and potentially completely unfeasible. That's a scenario that we all want to avoid. This proposal and subsequent charter change vote is for the purpose of allowing the businesses in our community to come together and provide enhanced services to our downtown for the purposes of improving the quality of life for everyone and to keep Burlington vibrant for many years to come. These enhanced services go beyond the scope of what the general fund is able to accomplish. Let me be clear, the DIDAC and the businesses funding the DIDAC have zero intent that, sorry, that there is no intent in this proposal in any way for the DID to perform or replace any government functions and services provided by the city, and we would not have any special authority whatsoever over the public right of ways, common space, public policy, or public infrastructure design. This is simply an organization bringing the businesses' money together. This is solely a structure that allows the property owners and the businesses in the downtown to support the city in a way that the current structure does not allow. This is exactly the project and exactly the proposal that city council asked the DIDAC to complete. Since I last spoke to you on December 10th, I know that you've been doing ample work in crafting responses to the DIDAC and speaking with your stakeholders on this proposal. And again, I thank you so much for the time that you've put in. I can't thank you enough. The DIDAC has met multiple times since that meeting, and most recently, last Friday on the 25th, at which time we reviewed and contemplated the changes that you articulated to us in public hearing on the 22nd. DIDAC's feedback was favorable to the direction of those changes in that it served to garner the most possible from both the city and the public. I am confident that what you have in front of you will improve our downtown. Again, it's been a great pleasure working with you on this, and I look forward to you allowing the public the opportunity to vote on the charter change on March 5th. If approved, the DIDAC, me included, look forward to the opportunity to collaborate with you in the future as we take our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Sarah Beal, to be followed by Sylvie Overby. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. So, I had something else prepared, but I'm going to speak to some other things. I currently am a city-appointed official or council, I don't even know what you call commissioner, on the Church Street Commission, and I currently own a business in the downtown. So, and I'm also a resident of Burlington in Ward 5. So, I just want to speak to a couple truths about this that I think all of you know, but I'm mostly trying to speak to the public about this. So, first of all, no residential properties would be taxed in the current plan. So, the taxes only levied on the business owners and the commercial properties. Secondly, there's more power given back to the city council, or the city, and taken away from the businesses. The residents and business owners, I believe, want the same things. We want a strong downtown that is interesting and a place that people want to frequent. Our business owners that choose to do business in the downtown area have no interest in a vacant ghost town. There's no interest in a place where people don't want to go. So, we all want the same things. Burlington also happens to be one of the most locally-owned downtowns of anywhere. And so, we are your neighbors, and we have a vested interest in making sure downtown doesn't get privatized and maintained as a place that, the gem that it is. Also, just to speak to the current funding of Church Street Marketplace, not a dollar comes to the funding of the down, not $1 of city taxes go to the Church Street funding. It all comes from businesses being taxed. So, there's not a public input of money going to private interests as it currently stands. And that's not how, and then the current Downtown Improvement District, that the plan that currently exists would not have any public funding as well. It would all be residential, no residential properties would be taxed. And then, lastly, the small business owners are asking to be taxed again. So, they're asking for more money so that we can put it all together and make a better, improved downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Sylvie Overby is up next, to be followed by Annie McInnany. Good evening, welcome.
Hello. I know you've all heard from me before. I have great respect for the amount of work it takes to be a city councillor, so I'm going to preface it with that because part of my concern about, I'm about the Downtown Improvement District item for proposed to be on the ballot is that you really haven't had the opportunity to do a sufficient amount of review to look at the content of that. Frankly, the language is really not completely thought through, and I know, I recognize that, Councilor Oof, you've done a lot of work on this. However, I looked at, I've read through it all, and I know, this is about how much you would have had to read for one item. And I only had to read that, and you've had to read like 10 times this on all these items. But frankly, the language is just really not complete. It's just not ready to be a respectfully-presented charter change for Burlington. And so, I'm asking that you do not put it on the ballot until it has had, it's been actually done properly. And I know it was suggested at one of the public meetings that I attended that this would make great sense to maybe consider putting it on the ballot in 2020 after there's been a chance for people to actually read it and actually get the meaning of what's going on here. I totally support the idea of expanding the downtown district and the Downtown Improvement District because I think a lot of those businesses, and it was brought up earlier, that some of the side streets are, really should be able to participate in some way and get some benefit of that, the downtown being a vibrant area. But that could be done without a charter change. You can expand the Downtown Improvement District. You can continue to make it, leave it as a municipal entity, and there's some issues about not having it as a municipal entity like the Church Street Marketplace, which I'll address real quickly afterwards. But it's possible to actually get the benefits that you're trying to get in expanding it without having to go through the process of creating this nonprofit and then splitting the responsibility for management of what I know was presented the October, well, just January 22nd, just a couple days ago, last week, the final changes that were proposed to the proposed language had on the back of it the map of the proposed Downtown Improvement District. Because one of the complaints I have is that it doesn't even describe a contiguous space. But there's now a colorful map on the back of the material that was posted on the website for tonight's meeting, the January 22nd proposal and the map. But this, this hasn't even been discussed about where the boundaries are, who's in and who's out, and there's some very odd things about who's in and who's out, like why one side of the street, a section of St. Paul is in and the other side isn't. These are the kind of things that, you know, would be nice to discuss and have people actually decide what really makes sense as a Downtown Improvement District. And I'm somewhat informed, I'm, as you know, I'm on the Public Works Commission, so I'm not a representative of the Public Works Commission or the Public Works Department. However, I'm somewhat informed by my experience of my efforts to volunteer on that commission. And one of the issues about this is that some of the things that need to get done, that the Downtown Improvement District would be unable to do because they're somewhat of a governmental function, and then some of the governmental functions would be difficult to coordinate because you have a private nonprofit in Downtown Improvement District. So, there's a problem with tying the hands of both parties if you go forward with this as it's actually written in the proposed charter change language now. So, again, I think the ideas are great. It's just not ready for primetime. I think that you all have been, you know, had a lot to read, and I don't think it's ready to go. I just wanted to point out, there were two things that were mentioned. The list of governmental powers that are at the proposed Section 323(c) that are supposed to be retained by the city, all of those, you know, can be delegated to the Downtown Improvement District under the next section, 324(g). You know, so we don't really know what's going to end up done by the Downtown Improvement District versus done by the city, and I think that confusion is really something that we should talk about so it can actually be done in a way that really serves the interests of the city, the Parks Department, the Public Works Department, Church Street, the Downtown Improvement District, which right now is specifically listed for collecting the money to pay for the two hours of free parking. So, I think, I think we're on the right track here. I just think it's not ready. And one of the things that was also mentioned earlier, in your resolution, it says that the Board of Finance got the information about the report from the Progressive Urban Management Associates, the Puma Report, in August. And I went looking for that today. I looked through every set of minutes in the Board of Finance, and it didn't show up until October 29th, that report, so the public was actually able to see. And one of the first items, scenario number one, that explains that scenario number one and the options for this is that it could be an expansion of the existing district and that it would only take a majority of the Church Street Marketplace to vote to expand and 2/3rds of the city council to vote in favor. So, you can get the result without going through all this aggravation of the charter change. And there was mentioned about there's no plan for residents, just businesses. Well, if you were to see the other document that was put in in October 26th, it basically shows a suggestion that was made by the Puma, Brad Siegel and Yvette Freeman, and they're saying, "How do they treat residences?" And one of the comments was, "Well, we talked about it, and we recommend that residential financial participation in the DID be voluntary, perhaps at a flat annual fee of $150 a year because they benefit." Now, I think that's a legitimate discussion to have. How much do residents that live there, particularly in this quite large part of the city that is the Downtown Improvement District we're proposing, how much do they benefit and how much do they want to contribute? So, I just think, please, it may be a great idea. It's just that you haven't had the opportunity to completely do your work as our representatives. And you know, we all come up with, this is a representative government, it's not a direct democracy. And some of the questions and the problems that come up is that we all, as direct, you know, electors, we feel like we're not getting heard. And so, this is an opportunity for you to say, yes, we did not get the opportunity to really read through this so that you can actually represent us well. And I would appreciate that you take the time to do that, and so, we can actually get a Downtown Improvement District that is a municipal entity that does the actual things that you want to have done. That's the way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Annie McInnany, to be followed by Larry Lewak. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. What a warm welcome. So, I just want to start to take some time to add some context, just to make sure that we're all starting on the same page in this discussion, and to address some of the differences between the intentions and the actual, like, studied impacts of DIDs. As many have said before, DIDs historically, despite often having intentions not to create downtowns that are hostile to homeless people and people of color because of increased police presence and the overall privatization of public space. A study done at the University of Washington surveyed hundreds of police departments and found that most have policies that specifically target homeless populations, and a report filed by the United Nations, one of many, as I'm sure hopefully most of us know, found that police departments discriminate against people of color, particularly black people, and the state of Vermont has the highest racial disparity in arrests in the country. So, when we talk about a DID, we need to be looking at it in this context, and everyone needs to be looking at it in this context. A report produced by Berkeley Law studied 189 Downtown Improvement Districts in 69 cities. So, in practice, rather than an intent, this study found that DID spend most of their funding on controlling, cleaning, and redesigning parks, also fairly relevant right now, huh? Drafting and promoting legislation that privatizes community spaces for business interests and criminalizes poor and street-based people. And this included municipal and state legislation that promoted targeting, harassing, and outright banning homeless people from the district for minor infractions. That's already a policy we have in Burlington. Expanding the DID will only make that worse. And security with ambassadors or private officers to patrol public spaces, again, something that is being proposed here. Opposing legislation that seeks to protect street-based people from criminalization, such as attempts to overturn sit-lie ordinances. And here, I just want to quote something that they said, which is that "Some DIDs claim to offer services to homeless people. However, our research finds that the outreach that DID employees provide is superficial to nonexistent. This service work often contributes to the exclusion of homeless people and ambassador programs function as an extension of the police force." Over 350 homeless people were surveyed in this study, which is, these are the people that need to be directly involved in these conversations. It can't just be a superficial analysis done by people who have opinions about it. Over 350 homeless people were surveyed and gave testimony that DID ambassadors were disrespectful and interrogated the homeless. Research also shows statistically-significant evidence that DID influence increased rent and in some areas even doubled rent in less than 10 years. So, to summarize, these are the published results from one of the top law and research institutions in the country. This is not just a reflex response from people who don't like the things that you do. We do think about the things that we say. You have told us time and time again how this policy will benefit people who own things in the city, business owners and property owners, but most of us here don't own things. I rent here, I work here, but I don't own things. No, I'm asking you, as many of us have, to respond directly to my questions. With all of the evidence, concrete research evidence, and individual testimony of lived experience of how damaging this policy can be to working-class and poor people, how can you guarantee that this policy will actually benefit all of the residents of Burlington? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McInnany. Please hold the applause. I'm going to have to start implementing Counselor Shannon's. Wave your fingers if you want to show approval for what someone's saying. If you do wave your fingers, all I ask is that you make sure there are multiple fingers. Mr. Lewak, you're up next, followed by Phelan Fritz.
So, I have, I'm a resident of Ward 5. I've been in the city continuously since 1985. I served on the planning commission for four years here. I'm speaking tonight about the proposal from a couple of perspectives. One is just as a citizen who spent some time studying the details, working closely with former city councillor and former city attorney Gene Bergman on an in-depth analysis of some of the points of the proposal, at least as they were made available last week or have been revised since. The second perspective is that of a nonprofit consultant and somebody who's really lived most of my adult life, working in the nonprofit sector with a great deal of respect for the mission-driven passion that people bring to that work and the effective results that are produced by many nonprofits, probably most nonprofits in Vermont. And so, I just want to tell you a little bit about what I think is the major flaw of this proposal, the central thrust of it, as I understand it. The central thrust of it, as I understand it, is to take a set of functions that have been historically carried out by the Downtown Marketplace District in terms of the ability to assess fees and provide services from the revenues generated from those fees to benefit a fairly narrow range of businesses that are front on Church Street, and transform those functions and hand them over to a nonprofit, a new nonprofit entity. In principle, it sounds good. When people hear nonprofit entity, they tend to think of benevolent and social mission functions. However, it seems like what's been somewhat overlooked in this conversation is the likelihood that some of the functions which are now explicitly delegated under the powers of city government in Burlington would be handed over to a nonprofit board of directors whose primary accountability would be to those businesses whose interests they're serving, and they would make up a majority controlling number of the board of this new entity. And I, I guess I'm really struggling with the notion that a nonprofit group which is separate from city government would be delegated assessment authority to levy fees on behalf of the city of Burlington in this plan without being answerable to the taxpayers of the city, which the current Marketplace District is answerable directly. So it dilutes the municipal control over the decisions of this entity in a way that I think is really unfortunate and is not in the best interest of the city. And others have pointed out very eloquently that there's a number of problems with how these Downtown Improvement Districts have played out across the country in terms of the long-term patterns towards gentrification. We already have a problem with gentrification in the city, and it seems pretty likely that if we're delegating these functions to a new nonprofit entity which is not directly accountable to the taxpayers, that we might have those problems here as well. I did have the opportunity to go through a memorandum that the mayor's office prepared which gave an explicit list of functions and authorities that the new nonprofit entity would have, and then the functions that the city of Burlington would retain should this proposal come to pass. And I mean, I'm not an expert, I'm just looking at this as a layperson, but when I went through and did an analysis of the bullet items on that list, under both the, the new entity's enumerated functions and authorities and the city's enumerated functions and authorities, what I found was that over two-thirds of those bullets were things that either the city does already and does, I think, a pretty good job at, or that the Marketplace District already does and does a pretty good job at. And the remaining nine or 10 items on those two lists were things that only the new entity would do, but most of them were instrumental activities that are only required because of the creation of a new nonprofit entity. In other words, self-referential things that would not be necessary were we not going through this exercise. So, I mean, I think really what it comes down to, if you're looking at whether this is a good idea for the city of Burlington or not, is really trying to come up with an answer to the fundamental question of, how do we deal with the free rider issue? Other people have spoken here tonight about that. So we have a number of businesses which are not right on the Church Street District currently. Therefore, they are not assessed, they're not paying into the kitty for what it costs to provide enhanced marketing and services to the, and yet they benefit as businesses from the enhanced services that are provided by the Church Street District. Well, I actually think most people in Burlington, as, most business people and most citizens think that expanding the boundaries of the existing Marketplace District is an interesting idea and worth exploring. And the question is, why do we need to create a new organizational infrastructure to carry out what the city and what the existing Marketplace District already does a good job at? Should we not instead be talking about expanding the scope and the size of the current district, renaming it so it's more inclusive? We could call it the Downtown Improvement District, and we could simply extend the current powers of the downtown, of the Marketplace District to a larger area. By not doing that, we're begging the question of why it's even necessary. And I agree with what others have said, that there's a lot of unanswered questions about the details of this proposal, which deserve a thorough airing. And I think in, in some, it's probably not timely to put it on the ballot. It needs more thorough airing and vetting, and it deserves that. I think people expect that in Burlington, that if they're going to be asked to vote on a ballot question, that it will have, the issues will have been thoroughly explored, and the fundamental questions will have been answered. And I'm pretty sure that wasn't done in this case. Just one more point, which is that in this new regime that's proposed, the new entity, because it's not part of city government, staff members, employees who work for that district would not be city employees. So by definition, they would not enjoy the level of benefits and the salary scale that city employees currently enjoy. There's not a lot of people who work as city employees for the downtown district currently, but I think it's fair to say that even though representations have been made to the contrary, there's really no guarantee that in a new entity, that the individuals who are hired to provide services by the entity will enjoy the same level of benefits and the same salary levels and scales that city employees enjoy now, doing the same kinds of work. My guess is they would not, and that in itself would be a reason to take another look at how this is proposed to be put together. So my suggestion to you would be to not put this on the ballot. It is not ready for primetime, deserves further exploration, and particularly, I would urge you to consider the, the very important and worthwhile idea that by simply extending the boundaries of the existing Church Street Marketplace District to encompass most of the central business district so that there would be a broader means of assessment, collecting fees, and then providing services, enhanced services, and marketing based on those fees should be fully explored before we ask the voters to take a leap off of this cliff and pursue an idea whose time has not come.
Thank you, Mr. Lewak. Phelan Fritz, to be followed by Laura Solomon. Welcome, Mr. Fritz.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. How's everybody holding up? Got triple, triple duty tonight. You gotta, you gotta, as my, as my, as my 86-year-old mother would say, I can't repeat it. Anyway, I come before you as the Executive Director of Echo and the Waterfront, and also as a resident in the, in this community. I'm in front of you in favor of moving ahead with the Downtown Improvement District, and here's why. I did a little research before I came into your space. I looked at two towns, Portland, Maine, and Portsmouth, New Hampshire. They have lovely, wonderful, vital downtowns. They also have harbors. And then I took a look at the media, social media, websites of our fine town. And we're struggling to synthesize, to strategically align our waterfront with our downtown, to be quite frank. A lot of good intent, but not quite there. And so I think there's some learning to be done from those other towns that have fully embraced their harbors or their waterfronts. And that work has really enabled them to broaden their scope, broaden their draw, broaden their experience. And so I think the expansion of the Downtown Improvement District will play a great role in doing that work for this community. As we all know, we're increasingly competitive from area, area competition, regional competition, and more importantly, even all of New England. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Laura Solomon, to be followed by Brian Chena. Good evening, welcome, Ms. Solomon.
Good evening, thank you. It's been a long night. I'm here to urge the city councilors to take this item off the ballot because I think it's a little premature. And after listening to the complexities of it, having been discussed tonight, I'm certain that it's premature. I was judging the prematurity of it on the basis of the fact that I live on Church Street, and I have talked to a number of my neighbors and other friends who live in Burlington, and they know very little about this issue. So unless there's going to be a massive public education campaign in the next six weeks, my fear is that we're going to have a citizenry that's going to vote on this and be very poorly informed. So I just don't think that's a good idea. So that's one of the reasons I would encourage you to take it off the March ballot. The second reason is a bit more substantive, and it relates to some of the governance issues that had been discussed earlier. And I'm approaching this rather naively because I didn't look at what Larry looked at, which was the list of who's responsible for what, in what sounds like it might be a shared governance thing? Because I thought what was being proposed was that instead of having a Marketplace Commission that is answerable to the public, there would be a nonprofit new entity that tilts, it sounded like to me, toward the commercial interests. And that is very worrisome to me because we're talking about public streets and sidewalks, and that kind of governance structure, it seems to me, could potentially make for poor public policies. I can give you a couple of examples of things that have reared their heads in the past on Church Street, and fortunately, did not really come to complete fruition, but they are the kinds of things that might be foreshadowing of issues that could, or decisions that could be made by this kind of new entity. A number of years ago, there was a decision made to take the benches off of Church Street, not all of them, but a lot of them, in the summer. And it looked like the rationale for that was to keep certain groups of people from hanging out on Church Street. And I don't like the idea that one group of people could decide what other groups of people might hang out on a public street. So that was an example of, I think, a poor public decision. Another example that came up in the past and did not go through, thankfully, was when you were considering the smoking ban. And at one point, there was an iteration of that that included an exemption for outdoor seating area of restaurants. Thankfully, that didn't pass, but that looked a lot like people who were buying something could sit on Church Street and smoke, and people who were not buying anything could not. And that, I think, is another example of a very poor public policy. Again, thankfully, it didn't pass, but those are the kinds of things that I worry about with this kind of governance structure. And so I think it is premature at this point to put this on the ballot, and I would like for you to rethink it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Brian Chena is up next. Welcome, Representative Chena. And the final speaker is up after that, Julie McCuga. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
So I'm here before you today, not, not in my role as a state representative, but as my role as a business owner downtown. I've lived in Burlington for 21 years, 20 of those in the Old North End. I've operated a business in the Downtown Core since 2010 as a clinical social worker in private practice, providing mental health treatment services to children and families. As a small business owner based in the Burlington Downtown Core, I am writing to you, or speaking to you, to express my concerns about the proposed Downtown Improvement District. The cost of doing business downtown is already high for a small business. In the words of Jimmy McMillan, former mayor and gubernatorial candidate from New York City, "The rent is too damn high." Through my rent, I already receive the services that I need from the city: snow plowing, police services, emergency services, and other infrastructure needs. These services are paid for through the taxes levied on the property owner. I am able to maintain a successful business through careful planning and budgeting, and I just can't afford to pay more for additional services that I don't need for my business. I don't need private security, hanging plant baskets, fancy lights, and other luxuries. My business serves the most vulnerable disenfranchised members of our community. It is accessible in the Downtown Core due to its proximity to public transportation and due to its walkability. My clients deserve to have the essential mental health services that I provide to them, to be accessible to them in the Downtown Core, and to be given equal value to all other services. We hear from people around the state about policies that make it hard for working people and for small businesses to thrive. We, we hear from people who live here in Burlington about how our economy is structured in a way that further increases the disparities between the haves and the have-nots. Why do we keep privatizing our public commons and our public goods? There are other ways that we can improve our downtown besides creating another bureaucracy that will serve big business interests over those of the working people of our city. There are other economic policies that we can change, such as raising the minimum wage, creating paid family leave, and developing a zero-waste economy which would help all of the people, not just the privileged few. Burlington should be a place where all of the people who work here can afford to live here. And Burlington should be a place where all of the people who live here can afford to run a business here. Please don't push us, the working people of Burlington, out of our businesses and out of our neighborhoods any further. Please consider my concerns in the decisions that you make about the future of our beloved downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chena. The final speaker is Julie McCuga.
It's Masuga, thank you.
Masuga, sorry.
No worries.
Welcome.
I will keep it very brief. You folks already know most of my arguments against the DID, and they've been very well covered here: gentrification, policing of our homeless neighbors, pricing people out of Burlington, et cetera. I just want to reiterate that Puma, who you contracted for this plan, stated that the natural end state of a DID, or a Business Improvement District, whatever you want to call it, is to be controlled by a holding company. And I'm not comfortable with, I'm not comfortable having our city be one charter change away from selling our downtown to whoever the highest bidder is. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes that public hearing, and we will move on to the next item, which is a resolution regarding a charter change on Downtown Improvement District. Counselor Roof.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you need to?
We're going to take, we're going to take a one-minute break again. It's really, don't everybody take off? This is, this is not a five or 10-minute break. We are back at 10:08, and we are back to Counselor Roof.
Yes, thank you. I will. What am I going to do? I'm going to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
And wait for a second? Seconded by Counselor Shannon, and would you would like to floor back, Counselor?
Yes, please, just for some brief remarks to, just to get this going, I suppose. The resolution in front of us tonight moves forward to the March ballot changes to our city charter for the purpose of, as we know, establishing a new unified improvement district throughout our downtown. At our December 17th meeting, the council voted to warn charter change language that was in line with a direction set by majority votes of the Board of Finance as well as the Charter Change Committee. During that meeting, however, some councilors made it very clear that they wanted to see progress made on several key points in order for them to vote in favor tonight. There was a promise made at that time to work in earnest to address these concerns of councilors as well as other stakeholder groups. Excuse me. I believe that the charter change language in front of us tonight makes good on that promise. As we can recall, a suite of potential changes were discussed to the warned language at our January 22 meeting for the purpose of being clear about the direction these discussions were heading. And what is in front of us tonight is consistent with those proposed items, which include fine-tuning of the governing board's size going from 13 to 11, and making its makeup, and change, and fine-tuning its makeup, excuse me, namely by adding residential representation. Also making clear that the districts simply must have, codifying it in, codifying it in charter, that the district must have a social welfare mission, and being sure that it cannot contribute to political campaigns. Next, it requires, these, one of the changes requires the district to meet the city's livable wage, livable wage ordinance, as well as requiring the district to be fully subject to Vermont's open meeting law. We've spoken over the last several months about the contents of the proposal, so I won't speak to all of it ad nauseam. I wanted to highlight some of the changes from the 17th to this evening. But before I close, I did want to extend some appreciation because regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote, a lot of good work has gone in to getting to where we are now. I'd like to start by thanking members of the DIDAC as well as members of the Church Street Marketplace Commission. Many hours, many, many hours were volunteered by folks from those groups, and I'm glad to say that. to say that both are supportive of moving this forward tonight. Thank you also to fellow counselors, not only those who have been supportive, but also to those who have been critical. Your work has helped improve this plan while knowing that you may not end up voting in favor tonight. Finally, I want to extend a special appreciation to our visitor from Portland, Maine, Casey Gilbert, for making the trip in the cold and taking some time to share her experience, expertise, and perspective. Finally, and then I'll wrap up, I want to spend, I want to send just a minute thanking Burlington residents and other stakeholders who have participated in this process. You will note, aside from folks who came tonight, a letter of support for many of our neighbors, both residents and local businesses, in your agenda materials this evening. And with that, I will, I will close. Thank you, President Wright.
Thank you, Counselor Roof. And Counselor Roof, we would, of course, all of us, I know, would like to extend our thanks to you for your incredibly hard work for a long time on this issue. So thank you, Counselor Roof. And with that, we'll open it up to the City Council. Counselor Busher.
So, thank you, President Wright. So I think with each step of the way, this has become better and better. I think all the voices that have spoken, Counselor Roof, I'm going to give you credit for a lot of it, but I know you spoke to all the other members who actually digested all of that and, and moved forward and made these improvements and suggestions. But I think people's comments were heard and the model that was presented, that was improved and refined. And so I, I feel better about this. I still am not, I still don't think it's ready for the March ballot because I think this is really important. And one of the things I had said was that I really would have benefited from really understanding the expansion of the Marketplace Commission model and the Downtown Improvement District privatization or the proposal. I don't feel that I have, I'm really not convinced that it can only be one way. I really feel that it may, that may be the end result, but I'm not convinced yet. And so, you know, I listen to the public and I know there's always comments in the media and from around the table about who comes out to these hearings. Only those that are motivated, usually the naysayers. But I think that discredits people. I think people who care about it, who have the time to come forward, and that's a big factor, too, to have the time to come forward, come to the council and make their comments heard. And you represent a segment of the population, and we all know that there are a lot of other people out there either watching, who don't get involved until the time that they go into the voting booth and say, "What's this about?" You know, and, and try to figure and digest it, and try to figure out how they should vote on something. But for those voices that have helped us frame this argument, I think it's really important that, that we have tried to take those to heart. I do have a question, President Wright, if, if I'm allowed to ask, Counselor Roof.
You can pose the question and I can recognize it after you.
The livable wage ordinance that is being proposed, who does that impact?
Counselor Roof, I will, if you can answer that, then after that, I'm just going to avoid going back and forth between counselors.
It's my only question, but I just didn't fully understand that. I apologize.
Do you want the City Attorney to respond?
I think should be better suited.
City Attorney Blackwood.
I think the idea is that the employees of the DID, if it has any, which I believe is anticipated, would be subject to, would have to be paid a livable wage.
So may I continue then?
Yes, you may.
I, I'm not sure I know what the response is from all those small businesses, whether or not they can afford to pay.
No.
Is, oh, just the DID. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Thank you. That, yeah, thank you for stopping me. Yes. Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Not President Wright, but thank the rest of the council for stopping me. All right. So thanks. That, that really helps me because I was concerned about that, how that would be applied. So having said that, I, I want to say one last thing. I feel the urgency to invest in our downtown. I feel it. And I wish that I was able to say yes, and I wish I could support this model because I do feel that we need to do, take these steps. I really do. But I want a little more time to make sure we get it right before we move away from the existing model. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Counselor Tracy, and then Nodelle.
Thank you, President Wright. And thank you for all the folks who came out and shared their perspective, not only at this one, but at several other public hearings as this has, has gone on. I think that the process itself has been an incredibly rushed one, having served on the Charter Change Committee and having had to basically clear the schedule, get, get this done in short order in early December, after really only getting the report out in late October. So I think that this has been an incredibly rushed process and a process that has not allowed us to really fully weigh all the issue, all the potential options on the table, specifically that of a public option or an expansion of the existing Church Street Marketplace. And I think that that's very unfortunate because we don't know if we really could be doing better with an expanded marketplace because we really haven't fully weighed that option or even modeled out what that might look like. And so we've only really been trying to develop this one private option, and I think that that's very unfortunate. I also think that the, that with this and in asking business owners to pay above and beyond, and property owners above and beyond what they already pay in terms of property taxes, that they're going to want something for that and that, what they're going to want is increased influence over downtown and decision-making. And I think that that, at times, is not necessarily going to line up with what the broader public or the broader citizenry of Burlington would really seek in their downtown. I think that many times people want things that don't necessarily have to spend money. Whereas a business owner, a specific kind of business owner, because I think that Representative Chena brought up an interesting point, which is that not all business owners themselves even have the same interests. You know, a business like his, that's a social work business, that doesn't really require necessarily flashy things to attract customers, may have very different interests than other entities that are more retail-based. And so I think that that complexity there is not necessarily well addressed in this proposal. And moreover, that the, that the increased influence of, of private entities, basically property owners and, and business owners in this current structure, will lead to, you know, a loss of control of our downtown and a loss of say in our downtown that will prioritize certain voices and certain kinds of people above others. And I think that that in many ways is, in many ways, that this is a Trojan horse towards privatization and is part of a broader sort of creeping neoliberalism that we see in the downtown. With regards to, and part of that, I think, is based in the fact that, and that this has been rushed and that key elements of this proposal are not flushed out, that there's so much left to be, yet to be defined in, in bylaws and in other sort of conversations, things like how contracting would work, as Mr. Bergman brought up to us last time, things like how the people who are the private members of the board would be selected. We, we just don't know these key answers to these questions. I also think that while there have been improvements in the composition of the board, meaning having more residents, I think that in some ways that these changes are a sleight of hand because you have five members that, we don't know how they're going to be selected, but they're privately selected, basically, from the membership. And then you have, of the six public members, three of them are business owners. So really, eight of those 11 are members, are have, who could be under the control or have that business interest in mind because, you know, in any of these selection processes, the people can recruit people who are, who are really successful or really, not successful, but who are sympathetic, I mean, to their interests. So I, I don't necessarily see those, this as a complete win in terms of really balancing out the structures, and I think that that goes back to the fundamentals of it. I also think that Mr. Bergman raised a point that has not been addressed, which is that there's only one review after five years. He also talked about, and the other issue that has been raised time and time again that we really haven't heard an answer back on is the, that the increased fees will lead to increased rents, which will then be passed to consumers, which will lead to gentrification and make this a less accessible place for people of all incomes to really come and enjoy and find use in. So that's another issue. And then again, you know, we don't have a lot of public feedback on this because we saw significant and fundamental changes, things like the governance structure, things like the boundaries being changed up until, you know, just last week. And I don't think that a lot of folks have really had a chance to even understand that this is happening, let alone that in the time that it's been happening, it's, there have been fundamental and significant changes that have been made. So for all of these reasons, I will not be supporting it, getting onto the ballot today.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy. Any, I have no other counselor in the queue. Counselor Hartnett.
Thanks. So I was one of the ones that was on the fence and have since come along and will be willing to put this on the ballot tonight. Far too long, we have kind of relied on the character of Church Street to carry us, and it has, there's no question about that, but it, it's not going to continue. And when I look around to the other towns and I look what Downtown Winuski's done and I look what South Burlington is doing and Essex, and these are going to be competing markets against us. And within, in South Burlington, you could make the case with walking distance, you know, from the University of Vermont, from, you know, a five-minute walk, right, depending on where you are up there. And we need to be able to compete. And there is no question, the uncertainty of the downtown, town center and the big hole there has, has left a void that has put these downtown business owners, particularly the ones off Church Street, in a tough position. This is their livelihood. This is what they count on. This is, this is what they want. And someone's mentioned, well, who benefits from this? And I think everybody benefits out of this without having to pay into it. And when we get into talking about residents and some could make a decision whether they wanted to opt in and pay and others wouldn't, I, I don't want to go down that route. I don't have, want to have a class warfare here where somebody can maybe afford the extra hundred bucks so they get their trash picked up and someone that can't, that doesn't opt into it, their trash stays there. I mean, I don't think I want to enter into any of that type of agreement, right? I want a downtown that will benefit all. And I think we, we do, we do, we do a good job of that. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about class warfare and homeless people. And, you know, we're not, at least I'm not, you know, looking at the homeless. Yeah, there's a lot of great people that come down here and spend their days in the parks that are homeless or, or wherever they might come from, from their, they consider their home, and that might be a tent village somewhere down at the waterfront, and they want to come up and spend some time on Church Street, the city marketplace. I have no problem with that. Where I have, the issues, I'm talking about the individuals that come here to deal drugs, cause fights, carry knives. Those, those aren't really the homeless people. Those people are coming in from different areas and they're, they're the ones that are, that I'm worried about, that I'm concerned about. I'm not concerned about the, the homeless guy that wants to sit at a bench at City Hall Park. We're not, we're not trying to push those people out. We're not trying to push them out of our downtown. Really, they've been a big part of our downtown for a long time. You know, I remember John Kounavellis. I could, I could list people on and on and on that spent many days in our downtown, that were homeless, that were great people, that I got to know, that added value to our, to our city. So it's not about pushing people out. It's not about class warfare for me. It's about a better downtown for everybody. And, and I, I just think this is an opportunity to, to say that we're willing to grow, we're not willing to stay the same. If we're willing to stay the same, then, then we're falling behind all these other surrounding towns. And to me, this is an opportunity and I'm willing to let the voters decide. So I'm going to put it on the ballot. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. Counselor Shannon.
Thank you, President Wright. Counselor Hartnett said 75% of what I wanted to say and better than I could say it, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Any other counselor? Counselor Nodelle, then Counselor Jang.
I'm going to follow Counselor Shannon and say, much of what Counselors Busher and Tracy said represent my, my view. I, I do think we, we need to pay attention to downtown. I think that we ran out of time to really pursue the public option, and I thought, think that that would be the simplest way to do it. I'm a little worried that we're creating, we're creating a very complicated governance structure. There, there have been a lot of efforts, a lot of recognition of the concern about privatizing by creating a separate nonprofit. The solution has been to tie the thing back to city government, you know, every which way but loose. And so I think it's going to be very complicated when, once we get into it. I, but I think that it will, that the goals are the right goals and, but for me, I wanted to look at a different way to do it. I have a question about exactly what we are voting on here. So we're, we're just voting on whether to make the amendments to the ballot language that was placed on the ballot at December 17th. Or are we reaffirming placing it on the ballot? So if someone doesn't want it on the ballot, but does think some of these changes are good, how would that person vote?
City Attorney Blackwood.
You have already voted to put it on the ballot, so this is just a vote to amend what you, what you have already put on the ballot. There really isn't a way for you to vote to amend that if you then wanted to try to reverse the prior vote.
So this is not another vote on whether to put the question on the ballot? That decision has been made?
Correct.
This is a vote about whether to change the language from what was warned at the December 17 meeting?
Correct. That's the resolution in front of you. If you wanted to remove it from the ballot, you would need to make a, a separate motion to do that.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Nodelle. Counselor Jang.
Thank you, President Wright. And I think, I want to say, you know, Tracy Gilbert, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming from all the way to Maine. And I think we had a wonderful conversation before you came here on the phone. And also, we had a chance, Jen Nodelle and I, to meet with you early December. And I think we also shared what we talked about. And I also want to say thank you to Sylvia Overview. I think your points were right to the point. You did an incredible job with, with your time here. But I also have a question for the City Attorney. Looks like as part of the process, there was supposed to be two public hearing to be warned by, for this specific issue, and was just wondering if that took place.
I, I can answer that one for you, yes. We had, we have had, the second public hearing occurred tonight, actually.
So this was considered as a public hearing about this?
The, the previous, we had three public hearings tonight on, on the three charter changes, and we had three public hearings at our previous meeting to meet the statutory requirements.
Yep. So I think this proposal in front of us is problematic for many different ways. One, we had a chance to bring Tracy Gilbert here, and I think she spoke very highly around the type of DID they have. It's a C4 organization, and it was established, if I am not, it was published in 1992. Is that correct? Yes. And looks like in their, and their proposal, in the, their DID, looks like it went through seven different type of expansion. It was expanded over time seven, seven times. And also, the most recent expansion took place in 2017, if I'm correct, right? And I think under the proposal in front of us, it is problematic in so many different ways. We have a proposal that is talking about a C6 organization. And I was wondering if the City Attorney can make the distinction between those two? What are the differences between the C4 organization and also a C6 organization? If you can help us understand it better.
City Attorney Blackwood.
I'm really not an expert on nonprofit formation and the IRS rules between them, but one of the concerns that had been raised was that the C4 designation But one of the concerns that had been raised was that the C4 designation requires that there be a social welfare mission. So we added that into the definition of what this entity must do. And one, there was another concern as well.
Political contribution?
Oh, political contributions, whether or not this entity could make political contributions or not. And so we included that into the definition, that the entity cannot make those kinds of contributions. So the and the reason that that I'm not directly going into what a 501(c)(4) and a C6 are is that we didn't put that in the charter. We didn't say what form of nonprofit, because that's really up to the entity to get legal advice from their attorney as to which number to do. And what we tried to do instead was say, what are the characteristics of this organization that you all want to have? And my understanding was, the primary things that you wanted in this was that this entity have a social welfare mission and that it not be able to take support political candidates or make political contributions. And so we added those provisions in rather than trying to decide, you know, which is the IRS standard on under which somebody should apply.
Thank you, City Attorney Blackwood.
Just point of order.
Point of order, Counselor Mason.
The hour is past 10:30. So I want to just bring to the council's attention, I would make a motion to suspend the rules, complete action on this, which is 4.06. Take up 4.07, determination of need for concise summary, 4.08, which is City Hall Park, 4.09, which is the public hearing on the two, I believe, non-controversial zoning ordinances. I would just note David and Megan are here, and I wouldn't spend a long night. So I think we can promptly take up both of those. Bear with me, 409, 410, and 413, which are the two, I believe, non-controversial ordinance changes. My computer's not cooperating. And 414, I'm sorry, the budget, the little one. And other than those items, I would ask that we take up no further matters this evening.
Motion to suspend rules with a specific number of items to be left on the agenda made by Counselor Mason, seconded by Counselor Nodel. Any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of that suspension motion to suspend our rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've suspended our rules and will complete the agenda as Counselor Mason has indicated. Back to Counselor Jang. You still have the floor if you want it.
Thank you. So Adam Roof, thank you for doing the groundwork about this. And it has been done in terms of gathering input from the businesses. And I think the question came up as to have you come across to some businesses that are not interested about this proposal. You can answer it later. But do we do not need to govern our downtown by giving it to a private entity? I think that is very clear. And also, in order to understand our future, right, we need to understand our past. We know how hard Senator Bernie Sanders has fought for all of us to keep our downtown, also our waterfront, operated and managed by the city. Under this proposal, I don't think we should call this as a DID, Downtown Improvement District. That's one. And because just by the fact that only businesses are participating, are paying the fees, the levy fees, not the property owners of this. And I think people also talked about it here very clearly. We need work for our downtown. But we need to find a model that work for us. I don't think we need to go copy what is happening in other cities. We have our own city, and we need to work toward what works for us. Downtown need for work for sure. I do also believe that we need to call this Business Improvement District just the fact that they are the one who pay. And we also are not going to take care of the capital improvement plan of the downtown. The city will still do that work. To me, we need this. We need this. We don't have the time to talk to our constituents. None of us had the time to speak to people like regularly about what it is. This is not ready. This is not ready to go on the ballot in my own point. Reason why I won't be voting for this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jang. Counselor Pine.
Thank you. The I think the discussion, the proposed expansion to our downtown improvement district has been under consideration for maybe a little over a year. We've had a downtown improvement district. We've really had a form of one on Church Street, and then we expanded it at another time in the past. This effort today follows similar efforts going back, really, to the 1950s, which is a piece of our past that many would look back on historically and say, urban renewal had some real problems with what it did. It displaced large numbers of businesses and people. And we learned a lot of painful lessons about how to balance the competing needs that often face downtowns, protecting existing businesses, homes, both renters and owners, and the quality of life while ensuring a vibrant local economy that provides jobs, services, and a growing and strong tax base, which we all depend on. The marketplace is often cited as one of our country's most successful pedestrian shopping districts. However, as Counselor Hartnett said, there are signs that we need to reinvigorate our efforts and refocus to nurture a strong and inclusive downtown. South Burlington has now created a city center. I was just out there visiting a friend who developed some senior housing, and they have their offices there. It's potentially going to be a very vibrant urban center right next to our community. University Mall is actually undergoing major redevelopment right now. They have Target. They have a number of things going on to capture the retail market. Winuski's built a thriving downtown that is capturing more and more dining and entertainment activity. They have a small retail sector, but there is some. And the other suburban locations that surround us are still growing and capturing a greater and greater share of regional retail sales. Why does retail sales matter? Well, because having a thriving retail market is critical to having a thriving and healthy downtown. It provides the services. It provides the jobs. It provides the economic activity that supports so much of what makes our downtown so special. Burlington's share of Chittenden County's region retail activity has declined significantly from a high of around 40% in the 1990s to just over 20% before our town center project started and lots of retail closed at that time. So the the number to look at today is a little skewed by that project. But according to the local firm, Allen Brooks &amp; Minor, after City Place Project is completed, Burlington's share of the county's retail is expected to reach 20% and kind of hold on there, but it's not projected to ever go up above 20%. Add to this that online shopping has grown rapidly and is projected to continue on this trend. According to the U.S. Department of Commerce, e-commerce has grown from around 5% of all retail sales in 2007 to 13% last year, and is projected to reach 16% to 17% by 2021. That's very soon. I've reached the conclusion that we must redouble our efforts to keep downtown Burlington a thriving place that serves local residents, visitors, and vulnerable populations. I'm sure that the status quo risks losing even more of the economic activity to other communities and to the growing e-commerce trend that threatens the vitality of our downtown. What I'm not totally sure about, however, is where what is the best path forward at this juncture? The work done by Counselor Roof and the members of the Downtown Improvement District Advisory Committee is really much appreciated and has brought the issues facing our downtown into sharper focus. I think they deserve our thanks for elevating these issues that are really key to our future. We've heard some very legitimate concerns expressed about going from a city department that oversees the existing Improvement District to a nonprofit organization that oversees the expanded Improvement District. We need to take these seriously and ensure that the potential harmful impacts of the DID don't come to fruition. And we need to build in more protections to ensure that some of these concerns are really applicable elsewhere and not to Burlington. I'm actually not going to debate the merits of the proposal at this point. I just want to share with with voters and with the community why I am supporting keeping this on the ballot. I've decided to support keeping on the question the question on the ballot and to engage in a more robust dialogue about the pros and cons of this proposal. I think that's what we owe it to this community. I think we can have that debate when we have a question before us. If we take the question away, I actually believe people stop paying attention, and I think the focus shifts elsewhere. I think it's really important that we do that. And I think we need to be candid about the things we have figured out and the things we haven't figured out as we go forward. And this won't make anybody happy, what I'm going to say. But there's actually a good chance that the most optimistic projections of the proponents won't come true. And then the worst fears of the opponents won't come true either. I actually think it'll be somewhere in the middle. And I think finding some middle ground is really what we're looking for here. I actually have faith in the democratic process. I believe more debate, more democracy is going to result in a better outcome. I'm not really sure what that outcome is going to be. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote when this comes when it comes to election day on this issue. But I believe that we owe it to our constituents to engage in that dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pine. Counselor Tracy.
Thank you. Based on the question that Counselor Nodel asked, I'd like to offer an amendment. I would like to move to amend, to remove lines, the lines six through nine. And then on line 13, after it says amended, or after it says be, it should be, it would then say be removed from the ballot of this, the annual city meeting on March 5, 2019. Therefore, removing the line, the language on lines 13 and 14 that says amended to read as provided in the attached official copy of Charter Change Number Three revised.
Point of information, could the counsel repeat?
Point of information, Counselor Nodel, yes. Counselor Tracy, could you repeat that, please?
So removing the whereas clause, the whereas clause is on lines six and on lines six through nine, because those reference the attached memo with the changes, and then the next one referencing the changes. But the other two remaining where are the the three remaining whereas clauses being more more general regarding public hearings. So the clauses that were would be removed would be whereas comments were made at the hearing requesting the changes be made to the proposal consistent with the attached memo. And then whereas a second public hearing was held on January 28, at which the revised version of the proposed changes was presented. And then after the and then this would the final resolve clause would then now read, now therefore be it resolved that the proposed charter change to strengthen and restructure the downtown improvement district be removed from the ballot of the annual city meeting on March 5, 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Tracy. So the crux of it is that passage of this would remove this from the ballot, town meeting day ballot. Okay, so let's open it up to discussion on the amendment.
Does it need to be seconded?
It does need to be seconded, yes. Counselor Jang is seconding it. So we have it on the floor, open for discussion. Who wants to discuss it? Counselor Jang?
Yep. So under this under this proposal, data collection, research, and information dissemination for economic development is missing. Portland, Maine has a successful DID that has been established since 1992. Their DID had gone through three expansions since it was established. And the most recent expansion took place in 2017. Our Church Street Marketplace, let's remember that, guys. Our Church Street Marketplace was established in 1981, has become an asset for the city of Burlington. And all assets needs to be marketed, strengthened, and polished. All assets need to be marketed, strengthened, and polished. This current DID proposal of Burlington has already maximized its map with no opportunities for growth or expansion. Understanding the past provide perspectives for the future. The Burlington Waterfront is a special place for Burlingtonians. History has revealed how former Mayor Bernie Sanders took a stand to preserve the waterfront as a publicly owned and operated space by the city. Burlington Parks and Recreation is no longer Burlington Park and Recreation. It is Burlington Parks and Recreation and Waterfront. The Burlington Waterfront should not be managed and operated by any other entity other than the city of Burlington. The fact that our waterfront is already a city department being managed and operated by a nonprofit organization is problematic. I think the proposal of a DID map specifically includes properties and businesses facing Battery Park. We have heard from the director of Echo right here. And he talked about very specifically how downtown and the waterfront need to be unionized. We need to make them better. I think to do that, we don't need an organization to do it. We should simply add new roads that can come from maybe Pearl Street to the waterfront. We can do Cherry Street to the waterfront. We can do all of that. But extending the downtown to that, I don't think it's a good idea. Thank you, Max, for this proposal, and I hope that everyone will vote for this in order, in order for the Burlingtonians to have a say. According to the DID Phase One report prepared by the Progressive Urban Management, PUMA, only 75 stakeholders, 75 people, participated in an interview or a focus group. Over 1,000 people responded to an online survey to express their thoughts on desire improvement of our downtown. And yet, in this proposal, in this DID charter change language, going to the voters without any well-vetted community input, not to mention that this charter change language did not provide case scenarios, options for the community members to choose from. Let's not forget, let's not forget the well-done work by Sido, providing at least four options with multiple details for our community to choose from, from a specific redevelopment of Memorial Auditorium. Let's not forget that. But this proposal did not provide all of that. I think it is imperative for us to take our time to sort this through, and maybe next year, we will have a wonderful discussion to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jang. I'm going to recognize Counselor Nodel, and I just do want to say to the council now that we have had significant debate on this issue. And there is now, and it deserves significant debate. And there's now a motion made to remove it from the ballot. I want to get to that vote. If someone else after Counselor Nodel needs really needs to speak, I will allow it. But after that, we really do need to get to the vote. There are people waiting for obviously for another issue here.
President, President Wright, can I ask a point of information, please?
Point of information, Counselor Mason.
We're in a little uncharted territory. I've never, we haven't had to have a question revoked, a charter question. Is this our similar process whereby someone who voted in opposition to putting this on the ballot can be the maker of a motion to reverse our decision?
Into a reconsideration.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, this is uncharted territory for me. I want to make sure that this is.
I would say no, because the the point of having public hearings is for you to hear from the public before the matter goes on the ballot. So I don't think it's quite the same as reconsidering a motion that you've had before that would have to be made by someone in the majority. You're making a different motion, I think, to remove it from the ballot after having heard at public hearings.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Blackwood.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that when we when we had the discussion on this issue a little while back, we suspected there might be a vote on this. And we had the discussion during a break that if there was a 6-6 vote, what could happen, because people didn't want this to go forward with a 6-6 vote. So Counselor Nodel.
President Wright, I'm speaking in favor of Counselor Tracy's amendment, and I'm reaffirming the position I took on December 17, not to move forward with this charter change at this time, because at this time because I feel that it isn't quite ready for prime time and I would have liked to see some more work done. So, I'm supporting the amendment, reaffirming that decision. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Counselor Nodel. If anyone needs to speak in response to any of that, I will allow one more counselor, but otherwise, I want to go to a vote on this. Anyone need to? Okay. I would ask for a roll call on this motion to remove this from the ballot. So, if the Clerk's Office would call the roll, please.
Counselor Buscher?
Yes.
Counselor Dean?
No.
Counselor Jiang?
Yes.
Counselor Hartnett?
No.
Counselor Nodel?
Yes.
Counselor Mason?
No.
Counselor Paul?
No.
Counselor Pine?
No.
Counselor Roof?
No.
Counselor Shannon?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
City Council President Wright?
No.
Four ayes, eight nays.
That motion fails by a vote of eight to four and now we are back on the resolution with the amendments to DID and we have Counselor Buscher.
Yes, thank you.
And then I do, again, would like to move to a vote on this one fairly soon.
I just wanted to clarify that I misunderstood the intent of the resolution. That's my fault. I will be supporting this resolution because it takes into consideration the added language, which I agreed was an improvement from the existing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Buscher. Counselor Tracy, Counselor Jiang, did you ever hand up? No. Counselor Tracy?
I'd just like to also share that I did, I'm in the same boat as Counselor Buscher. I'm not going to vote to not have a livable wage ordinance extended to people. I'm a big livable wage supporter, so, I'm not, I don't think that this is enough to make it go there for me at all, but these are good changes and that's what I did understand and why I made the motion I did before.
Understood, so noted. Counselor Nodel?
President Wright? Ditto.
All right. I like that. We all sat? All those in favor of this, please raise their hands. Thank you. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. And we are now on to the 4.07, Resolution Determination in Need for Consized Ballot Language. Counselor Shannon?
Move to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Counselor Dean. Counselor Shannon, did you want the floor back? We're, anyone, any discussion? All those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 4.07 passes unanimously. That brings us to the main event, unfortunately, a very late hour, 10:55. But that is the resolution, Advisory Ballot Question Regarding City Hall Park. Who is moving this question? Counselor Jiang?
Thank you, President. I would like to move the resolution to put the City Hall Park on the advisory question on the ballot.
Seconded by Counselor Nodel.
And would like to have the floor back.
And Counselor Nodel has seconded it, so you have the floor back.
Thank you so much. So, first of all, I would like to thank all the city councilors during this weekend that we've been doing back and forth to speak about this and to not give also a special big up to both Monique and Donna and everyone else, the Keep the Park Green people. I call you the Lorax people because you guys speak for the trees. That is wonderful. But I also wanted to make sure that we are not here to debate about the park. Why we here is, should we put this item on the ballot or should we not? And I think when they approached me about who's going to put this resolution forward, I accepted to do it because it's their fundamental right. Being at my home, trying to put the resolution together, I didn't know where to start and I just wanted to be, for this resolution to be very simple. We're not asking about the number of trees, we're not asking about the number of paved area, we're simply asking, should we put it on the ballot or not? And I think the first whereas clause said it all. The citizens of Vermont have the right to petition their legislators and to instruct their representative. The second one is talking about the Vermont law provides that voters may petition to have an article placed on the warming of the annual meeting by submitting a petition signed by at least 5% of the voters of the municipality and file with the municipal clerk for at least 47 days and I think they did it. They also provided over 3,000 signatures and the city did report to them back, said, yes, at least 2,000 of them are valid signatures. So, it is their fundamental right and we are elected official, we need to make sure that our democracy is intact. 3,000 people signed it, they asking us to put it on the ballot. But I wanted also, this to be very clear, I love the park, I love the current design, I love the way it was presented to us because I think it will respond to so many things. We just talked about DID and I know through this design, right, this will actually sell our city. This would want to make people to come here, this would want to make people to use our park. I want to be very clear. At the same time, we cannot continue to do this as elected officials. You cannot elect us, give us the power, and I'm not talking about only about this group, I'm talking about in general. When you elect people, they work hard for you, we need to rally behind us. We work together, advance together, but sometimes I feel like group of people are trying to sabotage what the elected officials are trying to do. Almost 4,000, 5,000 hours has been put into this proposal in front of us, 5,000, by departments such as BCA, such as the Parks and Recreation and Waterfront, such as DPW. We pay those people. If we stop this, I don't think then we, I do think that we lost a lot of money, we lost trust and also, I don't think people would want to come and work for this city. This is a great city and I'm glad we have people who are involved, I'm glad that we have people who care, I'm glad that we have people who want to be part of what we try to do. Moving forward, let's work together and I hope that my fellow city councilors here in front of me, let's not debate this. Let's all vote unanimously to put it on the ballot. And I think their question is very simple. As an advisory, shall the citizens of Burlington advise the mayor and city council to cancel the current plan of City Hall Park that was approved by the council on 6/25/2018? And B, instead, to repair, maintain and improve the park by preserving more existing trees, shaded area, repair grass and existing walkway, increase lighting and benches and retain the historic character of the park. There is not a historic character to me of the park. Times change, people evolve, we are in the 21st century, we no longer in the 1800s. This park cannot be here as it is and also be a welcoming place for people to come here, especially the tourists. I am in favor of the park, but at the same time, I care more about our democracy and the democracy that the people signed this petition, it's in front of us. I think reason why I accepted this challenge to bring it with you, all of us in here right now. Hope that every city council will vote to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Counselor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. I think I'm going to disappoint Counselor Jiang here, but I'll lead in. I appreciate the many things you've said, Counselor Jiang, and I agree with a lot of them. Unfortunately, I come to a different conclusion. I will not be voting to put this on the ballot tonight and do not support putting it before the voters. I commend Keep the Park Green for their commitment to the trees, to the effort for really calling attention to some things that I think were missed and also to saving some of the trees in the park. As Counselor Jiang alluded to, the vote tonight, though, is not about the design. I support the permitted plan, but that's not the vote before us. We all stood 11 to 1 behind the current plan, you know, six months ago. The vote, I'm voting no because I'm struggling with whether, you know, obtaining the advice from the voters is prudent, given the impact that would send on future city projects seeking that advice after having received public input, obtained all necessary permits and having spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, taxpayer dollars and also, as Counselor Jiang alluded to, you know, thousands and thousands of hours of staff time. The advocates of the advisory question are asking for direct democracy and incorrectly assume that with this proposed double-barrelled yes-no question, a clear path forward will be provided to the council. I disagree. Designing a public, designing a public space is a challenge, particularly when it's in the heart of the city. Designing it by referendum, which is what we're asking, is impossible. As Julie Campoli, I think, emailed all of us and articulated far better than I was, you know, would, best, and she's a designer, the best practice is to bring people together, ask their opinions, rely on professionals who balance those wishes with the realities of the site, sketch out a plan, listen some more, make changes, go back and forth until a plan emerges from the iterative process. That is the process that the city followed for City Hall Park. This project started in 2012, first through the Imagine City Hall Park process, then the Great Streets Initiative. The public process accelerated in 2016 with presentations and input from each of the NPAs, city council subcommittees, Parks Commission and others. The design was discussed and approved by the DRB and the DAB. At each step, public input was provided and changes to the plan were made. This council weighed in on the plan in April of 2018 and responded to input from Keep the Park Green by modifying the plan and then creating the ad hoc committee that reviewed tree by tree, all of the trees in the park and which resulted in modifications to the plan. This council then voted 11 to 1 to move forward. I knew in June that not everyone loved the plan. I don't think everyone at this table loved the plan, but I felt that all voices had been heard and it was time to move forward and this was the culmination of a very public process. Subsequent to that decision, the administration has spent almost $200,000 completing construction documents and initiating bids. Construction bids are out and are due on February 11th. We are committed to this plan as a city, having spent over $500,000 and 100, or, you know, thousands of hours of staff time. I stand by my commitment that I made in June to move this project forward and I ask you to join me in reaffirming that vote by voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mason. Counselor Buscher?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Counselor Paul was next in the queue. Counselor Paul?
Okay.
My apologies, I had Counselor Paul next, then Counselor Buscher.
I would never have known the difference. Thank you. You know, from seeing all the people that are here tonight and those that have, even those that have left as the hour is getting later, I think we can all agree that we all care about City Hall Park. It's a community treasure and we're all invested in its future. I'd like to thank all the people that came out and spoke and I'd also like to express how grateful I am to the Keep the Park Green group for the input that they offered, in particular, for the retention of trees, due in large part, I believe, to their significant input. The plan that we approved calls for 47 to 49 trees from the 51 that were there last summer versus the 34 originally in the plan. This represents a significant number of more trees and I believe and I see their efforts as a success and feel that the plan is better for their efforts. Yes, it is true that some of the trees will be smaller in size, but I actually see that as a positive for the park. I see that as responsible stewardship. I'm certainly no tree expert, but I spend some time with our city arborists, I probably know just enough to be dangerous, but I do know that having a healthy, growing and evolving tree canopy is, it's an obligation that we have. I think it's part of what makes City Hall Park and will make it a vibrant urban park for generations and not just for today. We can't think just about the large trees for ourselves, we have to think about not only our lifetimes for future generations and tree growth into the future. You know, City Hall Park is not a forest, it is an urban park and I think that, you know, what my understanding of urban parks is that they should be a place to meet many needs of a growing community. We all define recreation and leisure differently and I don't see this plan as a tourist attraction but rather as a community asset that offers a diversity of uses and enjoyment for everyone of all ages and abilities, backgrounds, who can work, live and visit, who work and live and visit Burlington. So, I think we all know and Counselor Mason has said, that having a plan that in its entirety satisfies everyone is absolutely impossible. I love some of the aspects of the plan, I don't love all aspects of the plan, but I think there's something in this for everyone and I think that's part of a community process, a diverse park experience where we all walk away with something that means a great deal to all of us. You know, the park design that the DRB approved and this council approved by, approved by an 11 to 1 vote last June, that vote by the council in June, seven months ago, was the fifth action that this council has taken beginning in 2014 that served as guidance and our support for the direction of the plan and it included a decidedly positive vote of 10 to 2 to develop 100% of the design and construction documents for the improvements of the park. There was also another resolution in April of 2018 to establish the ad hoc committee. I won't speak to the ballot language others have and will, but instead, I would like to speak to what I see as a concerning process about the evolution of ballot advisory questions in the past few years, as Counselor Jiang noted. A case in point is City Hall Park. We had an extensive public process, years of public input. The council voted not once but five times on aspects and direction of the plan and ad hoc committee was formed above that to address further issues. The council, as we've all said, voted on the plan 11 to 1 at a meeting that was well-attended. The public offered further input and that meeting, on that meeting and all the other votes that we took. I hope that in the weeks and months to come that is a council, we can work to address the issue of ballot advisory questions. But in the meantime, I think that above all else, our vote needs to be our bond, our bond with our constituents, whether they agree with us or not, with city staff who we entrust to carry out the results of our vote. Our vote needs to be our word and we must all trust that we can move on so staff, so the public, so the community can work to implement the plan, confident that we, as the elected officials in a representative democracy, support our vote. We have to support our vote. I don't think that ballot advisory questions were ever intended to be a vehicle for us to get advice after openly seeking advice and input for several years and taking that advice and input and incorporating it into the plan, which is now a fully permitted plan. I know that there are going to be some people who will say that to vote against this is undemocratic. I do not believe that's the case. I do not believe that's the case. Our democracy is one that is representative. Burlington and Vermont are not direct democracies. Yes, we all do vote on tax increases, on bonding, and other issues as per our charter. And yes, we do seek advice on issues from time to time as a way of understanding what the public thinks on a broad national or local issues or ideas. But I think, and many of my constituents who have reached out to me also think, that responsible governance and responsible democracy means allowing elected officials to make informed and well-vetted decisions on their behalf. I would sincerely like to thank the Keep the Park Green group for their input, and I want them to know that I value their contribution. I believe your efforts have truly enriched this plan. That said, I cannot support bringing this ballot question to a vote. Our overwhelmingly affirmative vote after a seven-year process needs to be our bond with everyone. People need to rely that our vote is a true signal to move forward after months of work. I hope sincerely that after tonight, we can do just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Counselor Busher, Van Pyn, Shannon, Jiang.
You know, I've listened to, I was intimately involved, just like many others, in this process from the get-go. And I don't feel it was a, I don't think it was as good a process as it could have been. I do feel that I agree with some of the comments that were made around it being rushed at the beginning, with the posters and the dots and everything. But having said that, and I've worked really hard to try to give voice to people that reached out to me and bring about, and was part of that committee that tried to look at, that looked at all the trees and tried to bring forward a little bit of a different proposal as far as the trees. But there was, as I listened to what I heard tonight, that's the basis for why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to on this proposal, is that, you know, I go to planning commission meetings and I go to DRB meetings pretty regularly. It's a rare event to see around 200 people come out and speak about an issue. I feel that there was dissatisfaction from the beginning. I understand no plan is perfect, but I do believe that there was more dissatisfaction around this than anything else, and I think it's because it's City Hall Park. We have one park in the center of our community. It's not the waterfront park, but it's City Hall Park, and it's, and there's, and it's historic. We heard that. Most of us kind of know that, but it's historic, and, and it's treasured. Do we, so the voices that have come forward and the signatures that are on the petition represent that feeling of commitment to the park and to the community and what, what that park stands for. Yes, everybody wants to use it in a different way. Everyone sees their use as important. I think we, as a community, understand that, and we understood what needed to happen in that park that wasn't currently there. But I think many want those enhancements without abandoning the historic part. Having said that, the other part that is troubling to me is, what I heard was 3,300 signatures. And then I heard that in the past election, there were 12,000 people that voted. So if that's true, that's a quarter of the community that votes, that signed this. I have a hard time saying, no, we're, we're, there's a process that you can get petitions, and the council can say yes or no, and it really doesn't matter. If we've already decided on something, then, you know, we probably aren't going to pay attention to your petition because we've already made that determination, because you've empowered us. I think someone tonight said, she was one of the people from Fletcher Allen that spoke about the unions and strike, said that processes that take time, and we all know they take time, as that, as that unfolds, things change, and you have to adapt to those changes. Look at what happened with the Moran Building. You know, we were going to have a ice-climbing wall, and then all of a sudden, things changed, and we abandoned that. So I think that, you know, to say that you get an idea and you have to stay with it, I'm not sure I believe that. In fact, I know I don't believe that. And so for the people of Burlington, you need to know that I think as things change and as proposals change, you have to listen and figure out whether you stay the course or whether you entertain something else. And I'm saying those 3,300 signatures matter, and I'm, I'm willing to let the public as a whole, the voters as a whole, say, yes, we want to stay the course, or no, we don't. I understand we've committed dollars. I understand we've committed time. That happens over and over and over again, and, and you have to change course. That's not a reason for saying, right or wrong, we go forward. It is a fact, but it's not the reason to continue going the way you are going. So I will be voting to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Busher. Counselor Pyn.
Given the hour, I'm going to try to be really quick here, but we've heard a lot about participatory democracy. We are a representative democracy. I think we all know the difference, and direct democracy is, is perhaps a concept that is, is hard for us as elected officials to really fully appreciate. I have to just share with you that I got involved in Burlington politics by going door-to-door and standing out on Chur Street Marketplace year after year in the 1980s to get tenants' rights in Burlington. We had no tenants' rights in Vermont. There wasn't even a state law called a landlord-tenant law. Counselor Busher was a counselor in the later part of the 80s, when we used to have to come to this council, and that council, when Bernie was mayor, would have never put those questions that we brought forward on the ballot if they had a choice. They didn't feel they had a choice. So we would go and we would gather signatures in the winter with bic pens that barely wrote, and we would come in with our signatures, and in the end, this council honored that tradition. Somewhere along the line, I think things have changed. I know there was a Supreme Court decision, but I've heard different views of whether that decision says to us, you have the option, you don't have the option. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not going to pretend I know the answer. I just fundamentally don't think that we are up here as particularly brilliant individuals. We are here because our constituents chose us, but we're supposed to represent their voices. And in this case, we have thousands of people, thousands of Burlingtonians telling us they would like a chance to discuss and debate this on its merits and bring it to a vote. I think we owe it to our constituents. I don't actually think it has anything to do with whether you like the plan or the process. That is irrelevant. The point is, we have constituents who've asked us to be representative of them in a direct way, and I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to forget about the process, put all that aside, and allow this process to be truly open and democratic. That's all people are asking, and I think we really owe them that.
Thank you, Counselor Pyn. Counselor Shannon.
Thank you, President Wright. Like, I think, many around this table, I have had different positions over a period of time. I initially could not see a reason to put this on the ballot, and over time, I heard from a few people who said, well, what's the harm? And I gave that a lot of thought, and probably last Friday, that's about where I was when I decided to post on my front porch forum and get more input from the public, because I do value input from my constituents, and I have sought it on many issues over the many years that I've served on this council. And I'm always impressed with, with the quality of feedback that I get when I do that. This time was an exception. I got far more feedback and more information than I've probably gotten on any other issue I've posted. And I know I've posted questions about gun control. I've posted questions about height and zoning and all kinds of things over the years, but this was truly astounding. Tonight, we heard from 52 speakers at public forum, I believe. I heard from over 150 constituents through email. And while I expected that what my constituents were going to say was, yes, there's been a lot of process, it may or may not have been flawed, but what's the harm in putting the question on the ballot? But that's not what I heard. 75% of the over 150 people who emailed me from, just from the South District, just, just my constituents, said, please do not put this on the ballot. And I did not think that there was really passion in that point of view. I thought that the passion was really on the side of, we must protect democracy, we must put it on the ballot. But no, there was a lot of passion in the argument that this is disruptive to our democracy to put it on the ballot, to, to take a decision that had had a high level of public input over a course of years, and to disrupt that decision is very different than to deny a citizen initiative, because this is not a citizen initiative. This was a, a city initiative, and we've been working through a process and getting input, on and off, I'll admit, for eight years or so, but solidly for the last three. And this council has had many decision points. The bus station was, was raised as a, as an issue where we changed course because we didn't have the public with us. I was actually the first no vote on that, and that felt a little odd, being a freshman counselor and voting, I think it was 13 to 1 one night, because I didn't think that was a good idea. But that decision was still with the council. That decision hadn't gone through all of the permitting process that this decision has gone through. This petitioning process started to get, to get the question on the November ballot. Is there any point in time where it's too late? After, after you go through the permitting process, after you go through the appeals process, after you take the direction of the council for eight months and spend all of that money, after you can't get the petition, enough signatures to get it on the petition in November? How many cycles can we go through? And I don't know that there are, I have no idea how many signatures they collected. I know that many signatures were duplicates. A woman said to us tonight that she never said no so many times to signing a petition. Well, many people said yes several times to signing a petition. They certainly had the required number of signatures, and I think there's, you know, that's undisputed, but I think we should probably leave it at that. My constituents were passionate that we have a representative democracy, and while we were told here tonight that we should have a popular democracy, I think it was called, that's not what we have, and if that's what we want to have, we, we have choices and we can change our form of government, but that's not what we have today. And I think it's a dangerous path to take, and that's really what I was being told, is don't let a minority group undo all of this good work. I have been, statements that I made have been used to say that the question that's being put forward is a good question, because I've said we won't get the feedback that we need from a question. Actually, it doesn't matter what the question is. We can change the wording, we can keep the wording, we're still not going to get the feedback that we need. And I think what the harm here really is, is that if we get a yes vote, we have put this project back six weeks, and in a, in, in a situation where we have a very short construction season, we're putting at risk then, are we putting the farmers out, farmers' market out now for two seasons instead of one? Are we going to be able to get this project done? I'm not sure that we know that. If we get a no vote, we have no idea why. Some people have said that, that, you know, they really, they don't want us to go forward because the farmers' market's going to be out for one season, and they don't want the farmers' market out of the park at all. Other people have said they would vote no because they don't think the farmers' market should be accommodated in our new plan. Some people vote no because of historic preservation issues, and I will say that I have been the person on this council who has fought the hardest for historic preservation concessions in this, in this project, and it was reviewed by three different historic preservation groups. It was reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Department. It was reviewed by Preservation Burlington, and it was reviewed by Preservation Trust of Vermont, all of whom signed off. Preservation Burlington, in their comments, said the new plan responds to our recommendations while incorporating new materials and amenities. There is more paving, and that's something we mentioned several times, but it is hoped that the paved areas will alleviate stress on the grassed areas so that there can actually be grass in the park again. Now the soil is so compacted that it basically is paved. Nothing can grow, and it's impermeable. The new design is different from what is there now, no question, but I think, but I think we managed to retain the key elements of the park as it has existed over, for over 100 years. I fought very hard for a central water feature in this park, which is an essential historic element. I didn't get everything I wanted. I did get something. I'm not even sure exactly what that is yet, but it will be something at some point in time. I'm not as excited about this plan as Counselor Jiang is, but I have faith in the process, and I understand it is not my personal park, and I'm not going to get everything that I want. But I don't think that we should disrupt the process at this point in time. I don't think it's the right thing to do, and it's not that I don't want to hear from people, but having a referendum on this tells us nothing about what people want or don't want. And what happens when we, we go through this, we start this process from scratch, and we go through it all again, and we have a new design, but people still object to that design, and we put it on the ballot, and they vote no on that? It doesn't tell us anything. We set community priorities based on feedback, direct feedback from the people who really cared about this park, and we did the best we could to address all the variety of input that we got, and some of it conflicts. This is not perfect, but it's time to move forward. The park needs to, the park needs to be fixed, and we can't take this through another season. So I hope that you will support putting it on the ballot.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Counselor, I'm going right now to counselors who have not spoken yet, and then we'll go back to a second round for counselors to have, if it's desired. Counselor Dean is up next, then Hartnett, then NoDell.
Thank you, President Wright. I think my message tonight is pretty simple. I think that, Counselor, my, my fellow Democratic counselors have really made the case in detail for the process and, and, and the difficulties that exist for considering putting this on the ballot. And, you know, in my view, although there are many here tonight who would vigorously disagree with me, the process that brought the current plan for the remaking of City Hall Park has found a way to balance the many competing interests and requests made by Burlington voters. Citizens that got involved and citizens who made a very real effort to participate in a public process that extended over years and multiple design changes, and that plan responded to their input, getting better with each round of design. Now, as a design professional, what I see when I review this plan for the renewed City Hall Park is an inspired, inclusive, and welcoming place that will be a spark of life and fun and activity at the heart of our city, much, much more than it is today. And I commend all the efforts of the citizens' boards and commissions, the Park and Arts Committee, Burlington City Arts, SITO Planning, the Parks Department... Committee, Burlington City Arts, SITO Planning, the Parks Department, DPW, and the inspired design efforts of the Landscape and Engineering Team, as well as the critical input of the DAB and the DRB. If I choose to vote tonight to put this referendum question on the March ballot, it is clear that I'm questioning the validity of all their work, and the efforts of those diligent citizens who chose to engage with this extended process. On the other side, another diligent group of citizens who are bringing this referendum question forward, citizens who took, undertook a very significant task in public organizing and effort, and although I wish this question had been before us sometime so that we could have had this, considered it for the November ballot, they have done difficult work, submitted the necessary signatures, and should be credited for their efforts, and I do. If I choose tonight to not put this referendum question on the March ballot, some will say I'm being anti-democratic, or unfair, or not recognizing their efforts. And I think that criticism is fair as well. But as a city councillor, I believe it's my responsibility to listen to all voices on issues of citywide consequence like this difficult question. But when it comes right down to it, it's the voices and views of my constituents, the people who elected me to be the representative, that I must listen to most closely, and do my best to represent with the votes I make before this council on their behalf. And like Councillor Shannon, I did reach out to those constituents to ask their views. And I have read and reread the messages that have come back to me. And they had similar passion, I think, from what Councillor Shannon heard from hers. And I did hear responses on both sides, but, you know, the strong sentiment of my constituents, and I will vote in agreeing with them, is that this revitalization of City Hall Park should move forward. It's long overdue, and we need to get it started as soon as we can. And it's for that reason that I will not support the referendum language being included on the March ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dean. Councillor Hartnett.
Thank you. I have a little bit of a different take on this. And my issue is with the language, and it was a year ago on the F-35 as well. And that's why I voted not to put the F-35 question on the ballot. And we heard a little bit about it in public forum tonight. One speaker talked about, we have to come up with a process where we work together on the language that we put on these petitions before people go out and sign them. And then we also heard, I think near the end, someone talk about really, you know, how important the language is, and who writes that language. And if you look at the language here, as Councillor Busher said, if this was, she talked about it being a direct question, should we move forward with the park, or should we put it on hold and have a better process? That's not what this question says, right? This question is kind of editorializing the issue. It's leading, if it was in, if we were in a courtroom, I think the judge would throw the question out. It's leading the witness, right? And so I really have a big issue with that, right? If this was a direct question, should we continue forward with the current plans of the future park, or should we stop and look at the process to see if there's a better plan? It doesn't say that, right? I mean, I was at the polls in November. I listened to some of the people that had the petitions, asking people to sign, right? And I heard them talking about how Vijay, who's in the back of the room here tonight, works for the city, has lied and said there was trees that were dying, that were, you know, needed to be cut down. And they went out and hired an expert, and that expert came in and said, no, no, Vijay's credibility and his character was wrong, right? I mean, to me, you have two experts. One has an opinion, the other person has an opinion, and that's fine. But to go out and to make the assumption that a city employee would go out and intentionally lie to move this project forward, to me, was really disrespectful. That person knows who he was. He knows that I interrupted him during the process. And I told him point blank right there, that to move forward with this ballot question is that you need to be honest, and you need to be forthcoming with the people that you're talking with. And I'm not quite sure that that happened in this process. Now, the Keep the Park Green people, the leadership of their group, I do have a lot of respect for, and I do think they handle themselves well. But there were cases that people that were representing this group did not. And that was disappointing to me. You might have a different opinion, and you might feel differently, but to go out and kind of question the integrity of a city employee who is there to represent all of us, and I think everybody that walked through the park, and I did numerous times, I think three different times, you know, Vijay was very clear what trees were good, what trees weren't, what trees had two or three years left. I don't think there was any, you know, misguidance on his part. And so I think that was, you know, unfair to claim that. So, you know, for those who voted to put the F-35 question on the ballot a year ago, I don't know how they don't vote to put this on, I will say that. These people went out, did their civic duty, they engaged in democratic process, and, you know, that was the reason that went on, right? I voted not to put that on, and I'm going to be consistent this time, I'm going to vote not to put this on due to the language. And I do think that language is really editorializing the question, and it's misleading to the voters. And so I will not vote to put this on the ballot.
Thank you, Councillor Hartnett. Councillor Nodell.
Thank you, President Wright. Obviously, this project has a very unique history. Last summer, we formed an ad hoc committee. It was kind of a new experiment for us, in the sense that it was a blend of elected officials, city staff, and members of the leadership of Keep the Park Green to try to come to a compromise on redesigning the plan in order to, for the most part, I think, save some of the healthy trees. There are some other issues, but for me, I think the forefront was always saving some of the mature, healthy trees, which just have immense value and importance to us as a society. So I think that we're here tonight because we didn't go get far enough in the ad hoc committee process. For me, it's really not about the process, it really is about the park and the design for the park. And I think we didn't get quite far enough in that process, and that's why we're still having this conversation. Now, the question, I'm going to be voting to put this on the ballot, I seconded the motion to adopt. So the question says, should we cancel the current plan? Okay. If we get a strong result, one way or another, then that's new information for us, right? A strong result that says yes to cancel, I think, will be a signal that you got to keep working on the plan. For me, it won't be go back and start all over again. It'll be kind of keep working, try to see if you can save some more of those big, healthy trees. If the answer comes back a strong no, then the community has signed on, they understand what this is, they understand what's going to happen, and they are on board with it. Now, in this latter scenario, we move forward with this plan, the day will come when some of those beautiful, old, healthy trees are taken down. And people in their community are going to say, what the hell is going on? What are we doing? And I think if that day comes, it will be, have been useful to us to have gotten an affirmation from the community that we understand what you're talking about here and what you're going to do, and that we can say, we did ask you, we did do a final check-in to make sure. And so that's where I'm at, President Wright.
Thank you, Councillor Nodell. Councillor Roof.
Thank you, President Wright. Given the hour, I'll also try to be swift, a lot of cases have been already made, but I was talking to constituents over the last two weeks, and they did ask, please, kind of inform us publicly and everyone else, how did you move through this process? And so what I'll start by saying is, I am envious of anyone that may be clear-eyed and confident on how they will be voting on this issue, because it simply just has not been that for me. The way I see it, this is just speaking for myself, there is an impossible choice that faces me on this vote. It's an impossible choice because it, in my view, is between two choices born from two, what I would call legitimate democratic processes. The first choice being the plan itself. Love it or hate it, I believe it to be the result of a legitimate process, like I said, and one that took into account the opinions of residents from across the city and required the hard work of dedicated city staff. It also earned the approval of the majority of this representative body. The second choice, what's in front of us tonight, the result of a citizen-led, resident-led petition, one that met the requisite number of confirmed signatures and was in line with the rules that we set in law. Now, of course, I understand that the discretion is with this council, and one way or the other, we're going to have to move, in my opinion, I like this metaphor, we're going to have to move the goalposts late in the game for someone. And in doing so, we're going to, at least some level in my assessment, call into question the valid public input that went into getting to both choices. That is why I see this as such a difficult choice. It's not an easy decision, as some may feel out there. So I'll just close with a few short, quick points first. I'm a supporter of the park plan, and I hope to see it come to fruition, one way or the other. I really am a supporter of this plan. Next, I have real issues with the structure of the language on the ballot, and believe that objective neutrality should be the standard that we strive towards in the future. Okay? And in that vein, and this will be my last point, I think moving forward, we need to, as a council and administration, some of, someone's already said this, but I want to be clear, get a process going that works to clarify such standards and expectations, not only for the well-being and benefit of future petitioners, but for the well-being of ourselves as councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Roof. Councillor Tracy.
Thank you, President Wright. I fully support putting this on the ballot. I was not a supporter of this, the park plan initially, because I felt like it paved over too much of the park, it provided too much of a space for commerce, and it was couched in language that, to me, in many cases, was really geared towards getting people that, you know, wealthier folks felt uncomfortable around, out of the park. And I do not support that at all. I think that we need to find a way to make this a space that everybody feels comfortable and safe, and that does not involve making certain people who we deem, or who some people deem, you know, unacceptable in that park. I think that that's been a feature, and a kind of gross feature that's run through a lot of this debate, and something that I reject fully. When the ad hoc process came forward, I think that I agree with Councillor Nodell that we didn't quite get there. And to put, and in my view, the reason that we didn't get there is that there was an unwillingness from the beginning to deal with design changes, or specifically the amount of paved area. So it was very difficult to save or add trees when you did not provide an opportunity to change that, and that was really evident in the outcome, and why I think that folks were so frustrated. I only voted to support that because it did save, you know, a number of additional trees. However, I felt like that was, and I didn't want to vote against saving more trees, but I was not at all satisfied walking out of that meeting. And I don't think, walking by the other folks who were part of the Keep the Park Green effort, they looked miserable that night, having walked out of that meeting. So, as we were walking out of that meeting, because it was not at all satisfying, and it was not at all a compromise, and they didn't feel like their ideas were taken into account. And that's why we find ourselves here. So I think that it really is incumbent upon us to go with the folks who want to put it on the ballot, who want to see that result, and to get that question. You know, some folks feel that it's not a fair, balanced question. I would say that that is, in fact, a subjective interpretation of the ballot, and that in many cases, the ballot question, and in many cases, you're just not going to, objectivity is very elusive in these kinds of contexts. So I really think that in terms of, you know, I'm glad that we haven't tried to tinker with language, I don't like tinkering with language that's already been signed, because I think that's difficult. But I do support putting this question on the ballot, because people sign this question and want that question, want that question on the ballot. And we've heard lots of debate and lots of controversy that we can really, I think, put to bed if we put it on the ballot. If we don't, we're going to have, continue to have a lot of frustrated people, and we're going to continue to see these kinds of outcomes where people really don't feel like they're being heard, and continue to push this into other issues moving forward, such that, you know, we continue to find the same outcome. So I think we really, the concerns around sort of bad process and validating that, I think that a lot of this is that people don't feel like they're being heard on a lot of issues, and they're continuing to see this, and that feeds a sense of mistrust in the city. And that sense of mistrust then manifests in these things that really try and deal with these sort of processes, because they don't feel like they've been heard. And so I see it a little bit differently in that sense. And then the other thing that I would say is that, you know, if the plan is as good as proponents say it is, you should have nothing to fear for putting it on the ballot. You should have absolutely nothing to fear. This plan should stand on its own merits, you should be able to sell this plan to the voters and be able to say, this is a great thing, and people should see that. And if they see it, then we move forward with it. But I think that part of the hesitancy to put it on is that people feel like a little bit afraid, a little bit like the plan that they've put forward may not be that, may not be as good, and they don't want to necessarily overturn it, or have the chance for people to really weigh in and overturn it. So I think that there is an element of that there, and I would say, you know, if it is as good as it is, then prove it in March.
Thank you, Councillor Tracy. I'm going to go to Councillor Jiang for a second, bite at the apple, and then we'll hear from the mayor.
Thank you, President. And I think, to the point of Max Tracy, that we should not fear about this. Because me, as someone who loved this, as someone who was elected by my constituents, who asked me to put this on the ballot, that's why I'm here. And I will also work with them, if it passes, to make sure that they vote in support of the current plan. There is no fear for me. I will do that with my constituents, in my word, so that it passes. I think the fear we're talking about, if we don't let this go on the ballot, that mistrust will only grow from here, because there has been already, with so many issues that I witnessed here in this community. But on top of this one, it is something else. So I think it is important for us to come together and respect our democracy and move it forward. Now, this is not time-sensitive, this issue about the park. It is not a mizzle, it is not a safety problem, it is not a life or death situation, it is just a park. Yeah, it is just a simple park with trees and benches and trees. If we leave it here, we can pick it up next year and move forward. This is not an emergency. So I think, to the language point that some people raise here, let's remember, when the Keep the Park Green wanted to put this on the ballot, the first thing they did is to meet with our city attorney, who vetted the language that they had. They went to the community, gathered those signatures, they were valid. On top of that, when I put this resolution together, the city attorney vetted it again, twice, and we came up with this language. So it will be troubling for me if anybody here on this table is saying they have trouble with this language. Nobody has this legal understanding of how things work. We trust our city attorney, and no one should underestimate her competence. This is the vetted language by our city attorney, and I'm glad that the Keep the Park Green people don't want to change it, because it looks like that ad hoc committee did not work for them. We have a culture of maneuvering things, and they refuse to do so. There was some amendments that were sent to me. I didn't want to get into it, and I won't get to it, but it was embarrassing to me as we want to maneuver our democracy. I won't accept that. Also, we were here, all of us, talking about the same specific round issue. People told me here, especially Democrats, that we're not voting on your resolution because our steering committee NPAs asked us to not vote for it. because our steering committee NPAs ask us to not vote for it. Right here, they said that. Their steering committee told them to not vote about a resolution asking to open a process to support our NPAs. And those same people today, here in front of us, telling us that their constituents told them to not vote for this, I did watch the Ward Five NPA steering committee meeting where the Keep the Park Green had, these are the ballot item, and the constituent voted for it. It passed 22 to 7. If you want to lead, stay in touch with your constituents, who elect you to bring you here. 2,000 people signed this petition. If we don't put this on the ballot, I don't see ourselves, how we can trust and move forward and the great work we've been doing. This is our opportunity. If it goes on the ballot, it passed 90%, right? I don't know how am I going to vote because I love the park, but I will definitely respect what my constituents say. Not time-sensitive. Let's come together, put this on the ballot, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jang. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Wright. The hour's late, the public, colleagues here on the council have heard a lot from me on this issue and so I will try to be very brief. I really just have two points. One, I would like to reiterate something that's been said many times tonight, but I'd like to say it myself too, which is that I do respect and appreciate what the group, Keep the Park Green, has brought to this process and, and more to the point, to the plan that is the subject of the debate tonight, which I very much hope we will see built as a result, I believe, of that group's advocacy. There will be many more trees in the park for generations to come and that is a good thing. The other point I have to make, I don't think has been made enough, and I would like to, perhaps close this debate with this. This project, more than any I can think of in the past seven years, represents a vast, multidisciplinary, multi-agency effort by the city team, many of whom are here tonight. We got to tonight in this, this moment of decision because our unique and talented Burlington City Arts Department was able to secure a major national grant eight years ago and then to make good on that grant and inspire the community to re-envision this public space, City Hall Park. We got here tonight because of our workhorses in the Planning and Community Economic Development Office committed themselves to years of sincere public engagement efforts. And we got here because our Department of Public Works Water Department has embraced the innovative concept of green infrastructure that both protects the lake and beautifies our streets. And we got here tonight because we have a no-nonsense arborist who calls it like he sees it. And we have a parks, rec and waterfront team that is committed to making all of our parks wonderful public spaces for all. On top of all the other reasons that I support this plan and feel we should move forward with it, I hope we make a decision on this park once and for all tonight. We should move forward with it to demonstrate to the big city team that has worked on this project for years, that we respect your expertise, we value your service to the city, and we intend to see your years of hard work to make a greener, more welcoming and more accessible City Hall Park a reality. Thank you, President Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask the council's indulgence for me to make a couple of brief remarks about this. I don't think it would be fair for me to vote on an issue like this and not explain why my, why I'm casting a vote the way I am. So I've asked for the council's indulgence. First, I would like to add my comments to the, the Keep the Park Green group, Monique, Donna, Wayne, others. I met with them. I have emailed back and forth. I have great respect for their passion on this issue. And I have said from the beginning that what was very important to me, just as it was last year during the F-35 issue, and as Councilor Hartnett has said earlier, the language is very important. And in fact, we are not obligated to put just any question on the ballot regardless of language. We have made changes to ballot questions before. Asked the leaders of the North Avenue Four Lanes question, they were very unhappy, but they relented and had a change in the question there. We made a mistake, in my opinion, the majority of the council last year, in allowing a very badly worded question, which was very leading and very editorializing, to go on the ballot and it set a bad precedent and we need to stop that precedent in the future. I would reverse this around, I, I actually pleaded with the group to accept changed language, to have a basic, neutral, impartial question on the ballot. And I would reverse what was said earlier by a counselor saying, there's nothing to fear by putting this on the ballot. I would say there's nothing to fear by having had an impartial, neutral, basic question to the voters saying, do you want the city to go forward? Do you want to cancel it? And leave out the second part of this question because I will repeat what, what Professor Kaledinsky has said to us, and she sent me a paragraph about this, reiterating what she said during the F-35 question. The question should not be misleading nor leading and the question should not be double-barreled. That is, you could answer yes to one part and no to another part, et cetera. And so, again, I think Councilor Shannon made a pertinent point here too. What will we learn from this when there is a double-barrel, that was referred to as a double-barrel question, where people can say, I like this part, I don't like that part, I'm not sure what we learned? I do not feel good about casting, I do not feel good about casting the vote tonight to keep this off the ballot. I have been involved in these, in these, as Councilor Hartnett and many others have been involved in these processes before. It takes a lot of work. So I do not feel good at all in any way about casting a vote to keep this off the ballot. But language is important. And again, language was, was, there was two different sets of language that were, was put forth yesterday and I met with petitioners earlier and asked and I emailed back and forth about the language and, and, and that failed. And I think if the language had been accepted as really neutral, impartial language, it probably would be going on the ballot tonight. So one, my one last point I want to clarify, just so everybody understands, I talked to city attorney Blackwood about what she provided in terms of legal language. And yes, in fact, she does provide legal language. But I asked her, do you tell petitioners if it is a strictly neutral question and impartial completely? And the answer was no, that she has, she gave advice to the petitioners that this is legal, it meets the legal definition, but the fact of the matter is, I can't tell you what the council will do with this, whether the council, and she actually pointed out some areas, that the council might have a problem with these different areas. And she was very clear about that and I talked to her just today about that. So I want to be very clear about what city attorney Blackwood's role has been in this. So with that, I, I cast a very reluctant and a very sad vote, no, to put this on the ballot. I wish that there had been language that was, that was acceptable because, again, we are not obligated to put any question that's worded on the ballot. And with that, I will close that out.
President Wright, can I call a question?
Second. Councilor Hartnett is calling the question, seconded by Councilor Mason. That requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The question has been called and the city clerk's office will call the roll.
Councilor Busher?
Yes.
Councilor Dean?
No.
Councilor Jang?
Yes.
Councilor Hartnett?
No.
Councilor Nodel?
Yes.
Councilor Mason?
No.
Councilor Paul?
No.
Councilor Pine?
Yes.
Councilor Roof?
Yes.
Councilor Shannon?
No.
Councilor Tracy?
Yes.
City Council President Wright?
No.
Six ayes, six nays?
That question fails by a vote of six to six.
We just have a public hearing on 1807 and 1905. Those are the only two. Yeah, those are the only two. So you have to convene a public hearing.
Next item on the agenda is item 4.09. I'm going to let Councilor Mason.
So I believe we're convening a public hearing on 1807 and 1905. We might wait a minute for the.
We may need to, we're going to need to take a, hold on for a minute here. Let's, TL17, we're going to, we're going to need to take a break for a couple of minutes.
My recommended action would be to open a public hearing on ZA 1807 and 1905, invite anyone who would like to speak to come up and speak to the council.
So we were, we will open that public hearing. And is there anybody that is still here that wants to speak to this, as Councilor Mason described it? Hearing none. We'll close that public hearing. And what do we have left, Councilor Mason? We are on 4.11?
4.10.
4.10. Councilor Mason.
Thank you, President Wright. So I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance amendment as drafted. Ask for the floor back briefly if there's a second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Busher. Councilor Mason?
Thank you, President Wright. Before us is a cleanup, what I put in the nature of a cleanup. Back in 2015, there were a number of amendments that this council adopted in order to limit conditional use review to those uses noted as conditional uses. The amendment unintentionally exempted conditional use application from conditional use review. This motion passed three-nothing and I would also, I think if David, David White is still here, if there are questions, I would ask David to come up to the table to address.
Is there, are there any questions for Director White?
No, you just closed the public hearing.
I thought, okay.
So there's a motion on the floor to a second read and adopt the ordinance as.
Okay. No questions for Director White. So the motion on the floor is to waive the reading and adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously and we have adopted that ordinance. 4.11 has been removed. 4.13, Councilor Mason.
My board docs just quit. Can I look at your? So I would like a motion, make a motion to place this in all stages of passage and adopt the ordinance as, excuse me? Okay, I was right. I'm just on the, place in all stages of passage and adopt the ordinance as drafted.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Mason, seconded by Councilor Busher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All, all those in favor of waiving the reading, moving the, moving adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And that is it. And a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, what's up? All right. Okay. All right. I don't think we need to, you know, calm down.
Just the city budget.
Okay. The budget. Let's talk about the budget. Councilor Nodel.
Yes, President Wright. I would like to move adoption of this resolution, increasing the maximum tax rate for general city purposes and request a floor after the second.
Seconded by Councilor Paul. Councilor Nodel, you have the floor back.
Thank you, President Wright. This comes with the unanimous five to zero recommendation of the Board of Finance. What it does is to increase very modestly the, the maximum possible tax rate for the gen, for general city purposes by 1.25 cents and then to also use half a cent of, of unauthorized, of authorized tax, taxing authority that we have not yet used. So the bottom line would be an increase in the effective tax rate, if this is all implemented, of 1.75 cents and for a home of valued at $235,000, it would be about $40 a year. The Board of Finance, we've been talking about this here on the city council, lots of other things, but your Board of Finance has actually been working pretty hard this January on next year's budget. And the council's gotten a little bit earlier engaged in budget planning this year than we have in past years. And I think it's been a great process and I think we have a good product here in the recommendation from the administration. We've whittled down a 5.3 cent potential tax increase down to 1.75 cents by trimming some spending and also using some funding sources other than new property taxes to meet our needs as a city. And the, the other, the other source of funds is the, our excess funds, excess funds in our unaside fund balance, which is kind of our savings account. And because of operating surpluses and great performance in, in, in recent fiscal years, we've been adding to our fund balance. And we now are in a position to share some of that success with the public by making next year's budget work with a modest tax rate increase and understand that we are going to keep working all the way until May and June to not necessarily use everything, all the authority that we're seeking. So if we can come up with an even smaller tax rate increase through finding more savings, through realizing some, some, some better revenue projections or getting some better revenue results over the next few months, that can form the basis for, for change in projections, we're going to do that. So I think this is a sound proposal that allows us to maintain a very high level of public services. And the city has been very responsive to needs that have come forward in our community over recent years. In the area of public health, the opioid crisis, the warming shelter, in the area of public, public safety, we have foot patrols, we have community-based policing, that's, that's kind of, it's a not inexpensive way to provide public safety. We've been adding firefighters. So these are all things that enhance our quality of life, enhance our security as a community and we need to find ways to pay for them. So I think that over the long haul, and I, and I know that there's a lot of agreement around the table, that we need to keep working on finding efficiencies and also finding, you know, some alternatives to the property tax so that we don't price people out of Burlington. But the modest increase that we're proposing for next year, I think, is, is very prudent, it's very modest, and I hope that the council will support it. And I want to thank the great work of the, the mayor and the, and the CAO. It's been a really good collaborative process, President Wright.
Thank you, Councilor Nodel. I am going to pass the gavel to Councilor Mason so that I can speak, but I also am going to let Acting President Mason know that Councilor Busher is in the queue before me.
Thank you. Councilor Busher.
Oh, I thought, I thought President Wright was going to speak.
No, I'm going to get in the queue.
I just wanted to say what Councilor Nodel said at the end, that I feel that the administration, I feel like the Board of Finance functioned the way I think ideally the citizens want it to function, with the administration working in collaboration with the city councilors so that there were more heads thinking around the table and bringing forward ideas. And the administration was very responsive to all those ideas and worked really hard to come, bring forward a, what I think is a modest and reasonable increase in the tax ceiling. And as Councilor Nodel said, but I still feel I want to emphasize that the goal is not to call it up to its capacity. We have it if we need it, but our goal is not to actually have to use all of that taxing authority. So anyways, thank you very much.
Councilor Wright, followed by Councilor Jang.
Thank you, Acting President Mason. I like, like Councilor Nodel, like Councilor Busher, also want to applaud the administration for reacting to what they heard from the Board of Finance and suggestions that we made and. And I certainly would not have been able to support the increase that was first being considered, which I think was four and a half cents or so. Was that? 5.3, whatever it was. But it, but that was a significant increase, and we, we worked together with the administration to whittle that increase down. And frankly, I, I still wasn't wild about even supporting the one and three-quarter cent. Because while it's modest, taxpayers are strapped in this city. And I hear it all the time, and I, I hear people moving because of the cost of living in Burlington, in the city that we love. But I, we, we use some of the unassigned fund balance. We asked questions about that. We also asked, and I asked tonight whether we could use more of the unassigned fund balance to actually avoid the increase altogether. But I, because I wanted to look at that, but I do respect the answer that came back, that there is a level to which we don't think we should go any further responsibly with the unassigned fund balance. I do think there is potential that we have at least a little bit of a windfall coming. I think that will happen with the Burlington Telecom sale this coming year, but we don't know that for sure yet. And we have other expenses that are coming that are really important. And, and there are a number of them, and I'll just mention one being the Senior Center. So, and there are others. So I think this little cushion, but I, but I, going forward, this little cushion is important. But going forward, I think that we do need to find ways to expand our tax base and grow our tax base so that we are not in this situation where we have another tax increase coming in the near future. So again, thank you to the mayor, to Beth, to the administration, and to the rest of the Board of Finance for whittling this down to, I'd rather have had it whittled to zero, but I'm glad that it got whittled down to something significantly smaller than it started out as. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wright. Counselor Jiang, followed by the mayor.
Thank you, Acting President Mason. But I just have a couple of questions, maybe to the drafter of this resolution. Counselor Mason?
Counselor Nodelle, are you prepared to allow it for now?
Yes. So for a household that's like worth $250,000, for example, what is the amount, increase amount this would be on a yearly basis for that household? 250,000, example?
So the, the numbers I had, should I kind of go ahead?
Yes, please.
The, a house, and I think in the, the average home value is about $235,000 a year.
Okay.
So for that home, the annual increase, if we used it all, the authority, would be $40 a year.
Oh. Okay. $40 a year. Okay. And the second question was specific to, have we looked into, what are the gaps? Why exactly do we need this? Can you give me like five concrete examples as to why we need to add $40 for every household or more? Why exactly? I'm not member of the Board of Finance.
So Counselor Nodelle, if you want to answer that? If not, I'm happy to turn over to CAO Anderson to try and field that, but up to you.
Well, I could, but I would like to hear from CAO Anderson.
Sure. So I, I believe the question, CAO Anderson was, was a request for the reasons, you know, what's driving the increase that we're seeking? He asked for five examples, but I think if you could just provide some input in terms of what's driving the request for the increase?
Five would be.
So in the materials presented, there are, you know, we've looked at where we think we will have revenue increases. So we've looked at like local option, where the ground list is going to go for property taxes. And, and so that's included in this. So we did project new revenues as part of this. It's not all just about expense changes, but some of the drivers of the expense changes are employee costs with the new contracts and, and the coalists that we'll see over the coming years. We are level-setting some expense lines that for the past number of years, I mean, sorry, some revenue lines that for the past couple of years have not hit their target. So we've been coming in below projections. So we're, we want to be realistic in what we can expect to receive on revenues for those lines. And we expect some costs to go up because costs generally go up. Fuel is costing more and more. And that's one line. We do spend a lot on plowing in snow. The past couple of years has definitely been a, a line that's, that we've had to pay attention to. So I think, you know, trying to right-size where we've been either under-receiving revenues or where our expenses, we know we expect some changes.
Counselor Jiang, any additional questions?
So it looks like I heard three example. One is staffing, one is fuel costs, and the other one is just basically operation in some cases, right? And was just also wondering if the Board of Finance had explored options of asking, have we even received yet the budget from departments, city departments as of yet? Have we received them yet?
Ms. Anderson, yes.
We have projections that we've worked from, that we kind of consolidated into an overall view of where we expect the budget to end up.
Okay. And have we, you know, explored also what type of cuts, you know? Or we should explore with them? Like, we know that, how about, basically what I'm asking is this. We know we had just asked for $100,000 million from the residents of Burlington. And we know over the years how much it will cost, right? And I was just wondering if as a city, we took that into account in making sure that we will now ask our departments to come up with budget at least that has maybe 20% decrease, knowing that the taxpayers will, are the one who will basically just take it all on? Have we explored that yet? So to, to me, basically, that's a question, but at the same time, it's about timing. We haven't worked with the city departments to get their budget, their annual budget. We haven't worked with them to ask them to decrease because of the 100 million the taxpayers will be paying. And yet, we here want to ask the citizen of Burlington for more taxes, right? So I am kind of having a problem into that and was wondering if you can explain to me that, please? I just want to understand and also for the community to understand of what we are voting on.
So I think the mayor's asking to field that question.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Mason, and, and, and thank you, Counselor Jiang, for the, for the question. I'll try to hit the kind of higher level comments that I wanted to in answering that question as well. I think what the last question is sort of pointing to is one of the challenges, the sort of structural challenges that we go through annually on, in creating the budget in that the, this is the time of year that there's long tradition and, and town meeting days in part set up so that this is when we go to voters and request changes to tax ceiling if that's necessary. The budget is not passed and finalized for many more months as, of course, we will not complete the budget process until, until June. And there is always a level of projection and uncertainty in that. However, certainly this administration, and I, I believe this has been the case for, for prior administrations, has been very reluctant to go to the voters and request a general increase in, in the property tax ceiling. There is high awareness, what President Wright mentioned, of the high property tax burden that this community faces. And it is, it is something that we have exercised as an administration and as a city really for a longer period of time, only when necessary. This is just the second time in the eight years that this administration has been bringing budgets to this council, that we have sought a, a increase that will fund the, the operating budget, will fund the general fund. And I am happy to say that even with the proposed one and a half percent increase here, we will still be well below in just the rate of inflation over that eight-year period of time. And there's a graphic in the, in the memo that we've produced here that shows that. And frankly, I think that's pretty remarkable that we've been able to do that because of a couple of things. One, our revenues do not rise with inflation, unlike other levels of government, state government, federal government, where the revenues are generally supplied by taxes that rise with inflation. The property tax does not rise with inflation. And it kind of is inherent in the, the numbers a little bit in that, as Counselor Nodelle pointed out, the average assessed house is only something like 235,000. People probably kind of scratch their head when they, when they see that. That goes back to the fact that we haven't had a reappraisal for, for over a decade. People's property, property taxes are locked relative to that assessment level year in, and year out unless this, with respect to municipal taxes for the general fund, unless this body votes to raise them, and then the voters approve that. And so our revenues not rising with inflation, our expenses, on the other hand, generally do. In addition, we have added together over the last eight years, as Counselor Nodelle mentioned, substantial new city services in attempt to respond to emerging needs. So I think it's a record we should collectively be proud of since we've, everyone here at this table has worked at this, that we have found a way to, for eight years now, keep the cost of government less than the cost of inflation, even while expanding city services substantially. Would not have happened without a lot of hard work by people at this table and a lot of hard work by the departments and by the CAO's office to find ways to be cutting and innovating even while expanding services. The final point just I'd like to make to address the President Wright's point is part of how we did it this year, and this is only something really we've done the last couple of years, once we've gotten our unassigned fund balance to this healthy level that it is now. There is about $1.3 million in this budget that are essentially investments that, out of this unassigned fund balance, that has reached almost $10 million, which, you know, for counselors not on the, if I haven't been at the Board of Finance, that might be, that, that's actually news just in the last couple of weeks here. And when you think back to where we were seven years ago, we were essentially negative $16 million. To be at positive $10 million now is actually higher than we expected to be. The audit came out better than was expected in a couple of areas. We are spending some of that down to keep the tax rate low here. I think we are doing it in a way, however, that is entire, that is defensible. These, we are not, we worked hard. We only felt that we was responsible to bring forward items that didn't, would not create a situation downstream from here, which would be even harder than it is today, where we have a structural problem in the budget where there, we are kind of masking over a large gap between our annual revenues and our annual expenses through using this capital spending. And, you know, kind of gets it deep in the weeds, and it's midnight, it's past midnight here, so I'll stop and not go further. But again, we welcome CAO Anderson's work to give us a way to do that that we think is responsible, and appreciate President Wright's support of that.
So Counselor Jiang actually had the floor, and that was a question, in response to a question. Do you have any additional questions, or are you good?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say thank you, especially to Chief Anderson. And I think your work is amazing. But at the same time, I don't see that this is something that we need to do as, 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 as the body. We should not do this right now. One, for two reasons. One, we know that we at least have, the city has like some type of savings. And now we want to go and, you know, ask for the saving of the community members. And two, we know that we expecting at least some type of funds from the sale of Burlington Telecom. I think this would have be if we don't have any saving and we're really, really down. And on top of that, we also need to explore any possibilities in making city departments, in making cuts there. Like, we need to think about it right now by asking them each to come up with their budget with a 20% decrease of their budget, because community members are tired. They're really, really tired, and some are really, really struggling. And Burlington is getting more and more expensive, and we asking more and more and more. Yeah. So I am having trouble to vote for this at this point, and I'll be able to explain to my people why. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Counselor Paul?
Thank you. So I think a lot of the, a lot of the points that I certainly would have made have already made, been made very well by Counselors Busher, Nodelle, and, and President Wright. I did want to speak to one thing, and that is that, you know, we have to go and decide whether or not to ask the voters for a tax increase before we have done all of the absolute nitty-gritty work that goes into a budget. That's just sort of the way the process works. It is, it is not responsible budgeting to look to department heads and ask them to cut 20% of their budget and still be able to get some of the services, many of them essential city services that we all rely on. And I, I think we, we need to think about that. I think the other thing also is that, you know, using some of the unassigned fund balance is a responsible thing to do. This is money that has accrued due to the good efforts of all of us at this table, but also due to the fact that, you know, that our taxpayers are paying taxes. And to be able to use programs that are not fully in the general fund budget for, and, and, and to use, I'm sorry, I'm not saying this correctly well, but to, to use the unassigned fund balance for those purposes is a prudent way to spend that money. I think this is a responsible thing to do. I hope that those of us around this table will, will vote to, to move this forward so that we can have this on the ballot. It, it's also, you know, one of the things that we did talk about is whether or not we should use more of the unassigned fund balance so that we could make it so that there would be no tax increase. That's not a smart way to budget either. So I hope we'll all think about that and, and vote to move this forward to the budget, I mean, to the, to the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Counselor Hartnett?
I have a little bit of different take. I mean, I do, I don't think it's a smart way to govern by using all of the unfund balance to cover or some of it to cover the type. But in this particular case, I would have, I would have preferred that we did it, had done it this time. Right? We have, going to have a 5% school tax increase coming along in March as well. We're going to have a $5 water bill upcharge. And quite honestly, I am disappointed. I think most of this increase is driven by what I would call very generous contract negotiations that we kind of gave into. And, and to, you know, a starting salary for a Burlington police officer to, to jump it that much at once, I, I, I think that could have been done differently, quite honestly. And so I'm not supportive of this in general. There's other things too that we've, you know, I don't want to get into it, it's 12:30, but there's waste in public works over the last two years that I've seen, you know, demonstrated, the conditions of our streets and sidewalks, particularly in the New North End, have deteriorated, and I, I don't know. To me, I, I think it's the wrong time to go to the voters and to ask for an increase. And I will not be supporting this. And if it wasn't 12:30 in, in the morning, I would go into greater detail. But I, I wish we would have found a different way to approach this.
Thank you, Counselor Hartnett. Counselor Nodelle?
Yes, I'll try to be brief. Again, we have whittled the potential increase down significantly. It is a third of what it was potentially going to be at the beginning of January. And I will also remind the council that, that all contracts are approved by this body. And so if this body is going to approve contracts, then this body has to make sure that we have a way to. a way to pay for those wages and benefits that we have negotiated with our employees. The other thing is that we are kind of in a full employment economy. And in a full employment economy, people have options. And in a full employment economy, you expect real wages to go up. And in fact, that's what we want to have happening in our country. Now, our challenge is to make sure that we don't ask the burdened property taxpayer to pay for all that and that we really find a way to spread the costs in an equitable and progressive way over coming years. But I don't think it's responsible for the council to approve contracts and then not agree to pay for them.
Counselor Jiang, so I just, I'll go to you again, but it's 12:30, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I respect all the time Counselor.
Nodel.
Nodel.
Counselor Nodel. I almost said President Nodel, but Counselor Nodel, I always respect, you know, as an economist, and I do think that this is just common sense. If we come in, come back to things like just common sense, we cannot have a fund balance, ask people for 100 million, and we know that with the sale of BT, money will be coming, and at the same time, still ask for money, ask for more money. I mean, I am having trouble with that, but I'm sorry, but thank you.
Anyone else like to? Counselor Paul. So let's, I want to stay away from a debate on any specific question. If there are comments about the budget, you know, then, or the resolution, fine, but let's not get into a back and forth.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention one thing, and that is that we did talk, I think actually maybe President Wright already mentioned this, we did talk about the BT settlement. If it turns out that the BT settlement comes in, then of course, that's something, that's a conversation that we would have, but we don't have it yet. And so it's just, again, not responsible, given that we have to make a decision about going to the voters now versus waiting for some money that may appear now, may appear six months from now, may appear a year from now. It wouldn't be responsible not to, to factor that into our calculation because we don't know when it's coming. If it comes, well, of course, then we would, then, I mean, we're not obligated to, we can put this on the ballot, we're not obligated to then do it if we have another way of funding the needs that we have. Thank you.
Any further comment? Seeing none, there's a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Counselor Hartnett, Counselor Jiang, vote no. The motion passes 10 to 2. I'll turn it back to the president to bring us home.
Thank you. And as we close out tonight, I just would note that the late hour of 12:35 and that Counselor Mason was running the meeting as we wound past 12:30, it wasn't me. And don't forget February 6th for the racial implicit bias training. And I move to adjourn by Counselor Nodel, seconded by Counselor Tracy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?